You ready to get started?
Take your time, Chairman. You gonna move this up or anything you're gonna?
Yes.
Number one. We're gonna do twenty, fifty-nine and sixty, fifty-nine and sixty right off the bat, then we're going back to the top of the agenda. So you'll have two spots. You have the rest of your. All ready?
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Beck. Commissioner Chauncey. Commissioner Graham. Commissioner Hilton. Dr. Highlander. Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Smith. Chairman Eversol.
Here. Invocation and pledge will be conducted by Commissioner Baker, so all will please rise. Okay, we're fortunate to have our attorney, Reuben Taylor, to do our invocation.
Let us pray. My Father, for another day we are truly thankful for the life that you give us, the land that we live in, the elected officials, the government that we have, and the people that we serve. For all of this, we say thank you. We ask your presence, your guidance, in the deliberations and discussions that will be conducted on this day. We pray for those that are going through bereavement, for those that are recovering from medical procedures and everything. We pause and ask that your will will be done. Bless us, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. We have a special presentation this morning. Commissioner Hilton, I'll turn it over to you.
Coach Nelson and Mr. Eller, would y'all please come up here? Thank you. Today, I invited Coach Nelson and people who she's touched through her coaching here today, just to honor her on her nine-hundredth win as a softball coach. She's East Hamilton High School's coach, is quite a milestone. Madam Clerk, could you read the proclamation?
Hamilton County, Tennessee Board of Commissioners presents this certificate of appreciation to Norma Nelson. On behalf of the officials and citizens of Hamilton County, we would like to thank you for more than thirty-six years of dedicated service as a teacher, coach, and role model in our community. Your journey began at eight years old on the softball fields of St. Elmo. From your early days in East Ridge playing fast pitch softball to your standout playing career at East Ridge Middle and High School. After starting your teaching and coaching career in nineteen eighty-nine, you quickly built a legacy both on and off the field. You are to be applauded for your many accomplishments, which include being named Best of Preps Coach of the Year in two thousand and eight, being inducted into the Cleveland State Hall of Fame in two thousand and fourteen, becoming the T double S double A AF Bridges Award winner in two thousand and twenty-three, having more than nine hundred wins in the T double S double A High School softball, and most recently being inducted in the two thousand and twenty-five Class of USA Tennessee Hall of Fame. When we find someone to look up to and admire, we are enladed, encouraged, and challenged. You have been a tremendous role model during your years of service and are truly a testament to the belief that anything is possible for those who aspire to lead at the highest levels. Whereas such excellence deserves public acclaim and recognition, now therefore be it resolved by the County of Hamilton that this certificate of appreciation be conferred. Presented this eighteenth day of June, twenty twenty-five, Lee Hilton, Hamilton County Commissioner, District Seven.
She is an alumnus of the same high school that I went to. She was also my fourth grade physical education teacher. So that's special for me and has taught my children as well. So we appreciate all you've done for the community over and over. I know all the hard work sometimes isn't noticed, but we want to recognize you. Mr. Eller, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Commissioner Hilton and Commissioners, for having us down here to honor Coach Nelson. It's an honor to work with her every day. She's a phenomenal asset to East Hamilton High School, but Hamilton County and schools and students rather as a whole. She's had a wonderful career as we're here celebrating today. We do have a contract ready for her to sign her up for thirty-six more years at East Hamilton. But when I talk about winning nine hundred ballgames, that's not playing nine hundred ballgames, okay? You're coaching rather, nine hundred ballgames. That's a lot of ballgames to coach, but winning nine hundred ballgames is phenomenal. After she won her nine-hundredth game, I asked her about winning percentage. I said, so if you've won nine hundred in regards to your winning percentage, you know, how many, how many games have you actually lost? She said, oh, we don't count those. So it's a pretty good winning percentage, I'll say that. What a phenomenal asset she is to have at East Hamilton. I appreciate the players and parents that have come out today to support her and you guys to recognize her. So thank you very much.
We have a certificate to present to you. Thank you for your service.
I'm not a, I'm not a, thank you very much. It's been an honor to be around the game of softball and to be in Hamilton County. I mean, I've been here my whole life and thank you. I mean, I appreciate my players and family coming. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Coach, and thank you for your service to our community. We have a second presentation. Thank you, Commissioner Hilton. Second presentation that's not on the agenda, but it's a special one. So Attorney Taylor, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I ask if you and the mayor would come and join me over here, and I'm gonna ask the staff of the county attorney's office to come forward if you would please. Mayor and Commissioners, a lot has been said about my tenure here as the county attorney, but as I mentioned to you in the last meeting, the individuals that are standing behind me, as well as others that at one time or another had been a part of the county attorney's staff, are the ones that really were the workhorses, got the work done through all hours of the day and night on weekends. And I appreciate this opportunity that the Chair has given me to recognize the staff of the county attorney's office. Attorney Mary Neal Sutherland, just raise your hand. Attorney R.D. Hobbs. Attorney Sharon Milling. Ms. Dana Beltramo, Legal Assistant. Linda Scaife. Paige Brown. Barbara Shipner, who's not here today. And for the last three years, the Risk Management Department was also a part of the county attorney's office. I spoke to Chief Roddy, and we wanted to recognize their contribution through the county attorney's office for the years that they were there. Bill Stowe, you have already recognized in the past. Judith Sanjay is not here, she's in a training session in Atlanta. But we have Noah Azano and Angela Duncan. Did I call everybody's names? Okay, now, we have certificates that I would ask the clerk be allowed to read as we present those to each of the individuals that are named. Madam Clerk, if you would please.
Certificate of recognition presented to Attorney Mary Neal Sutherland in honor of thirty-six years of devoted and faithful service as an Assistant Hamilton County Attorney. Your unwavering commitment to justice, your deep knowledge of county government, and your passion for public service have left a profound and lasting impact. You have guided us through complex legal challenges with wisdom, integrity, and grace, always seeking to uphold the law while protecting the best interests of our citizens. Your ability to understand not only the letter of the law, but also the heart behind it, has set you apart. You have been a trusted colleague, a steadfast advocate, and a valued mentor. The mark you've left on this office and on the people you've served will not be forgotten. As you retire, please know you take with you our deepest respect, admiration, and gratitude. You will be missed more than words can express. Also presented to Attorney R.D. Hobbs in recognition of thirteen years of dedicated service to the Hamilton County Attorney's Office, including twelve years as Special Counsel to the Sheriff's Office. Throughout your tenure, you have exemplified professionalism, commitment, and excellence in every aspect of your work. Your tireless advocacy on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and law enforcement personnel have led to significant victories, both in the courtroom and in the eyes of those you served. Nationally respected for your expertise in law enforcement and legal in custody matters, you have brought honor not only to this office, but to the legal profession as a whole. Your leadership in major litigation has resulted in rulings that protected the county and its citizens from substantial financial judgments, and your sound legal counsel has proven invaluable time and again. Your service has left an enduring legacy built on integrity, courage, and an unwavering dedication to justice. You have made a difference, and you will be deeply missed. Also presented to Attorney Sharon M. Milling in recognition of over twenty years of faithful and distinguished service to Hamilton County Attorney's Office. Your career stands as a remarkable testament to perseverance, dedication, and personal growth. Beginning as a legal secretary in this very office, you rose through the ranks, becoming a paralegal while attending law school in Nashville, passing the Tennessee bar, and ultimately serving as an Assistant County Attorney. Each step of your journey has been marked with unwavering determination and a deep commitment to justice. Your skillful legal work, particularly on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and in high-stakes litigation, has led to significant victories that protected the county and its citizens from millions of dollars in potential liability. These outcomes reflect your sharp legal acumen and steadfast integrity. Your recent appointment as a magistrate in Hamilton County Juvenile Court is a fitting tribute to the excellence and professionalism you have constantly demonstrated. You leave behind a legacy of hard work, purpose, and service that will continue to inspire those who follow. Also presented to Dana Beltramo in appreciation of sixteen years of devoted service as a contracted staff member to the Hamilton County Attorney's Office. Your dedication to the legal profession and to public service has been evident in every role you have taken on. From your early work providing legal research for indigent inmates in the Hamilton County Jail, to your leadership in managing the county's open records, responses, and compliance matters, you have consistently gone above and beyond in service to our community. Your thorough and tireless research in support of complex litigation has been an invaluable asset, helping to protect the county's legal interests in sparring taxpayers significant costs. With integrity, diligence, and professionalism, you have contributed meaningfully to the success and efficiency of this office. Your work has made a lasting difference, and your efforts will not be forgotten. Also presented to Linda Scaife in appreciation for fourteen years of dedicated service to the Hamilton County Attorney's Office and for a remarkable thirty-seven-year career with Hamilton County Government. Your public service journey began with five years in the Hamilton County Emergency Services Department, followed by twenty-four years with the Alternative Sentencing Department, where you made history as the first African-American Program Manager of the Misdeponent Probation Department for the past seven years. You have faithfully served in the county attorney's office, where you efficiently managed daily operations, coordinated staff calendars, and oversaw financial responsibilities with unwavering professionalism and commitment. Your tireless contributions have made a lasting impact on the officials, employees, and citizens you have worked with throughout your career. Also presented to Paige Brown in recognition of ten years of faithful and dedicated service to the Hamilton County Attorney's Office. Your journey with the county began as a legal secretary, and through hard work and determination, you advanced to the role of paralegal, proving yourself to be an indispensable member of our team. With diligence and heart, you have kept the office running smoothly behind the scenes, managing attorney's schedules, overseeing expenses, maintaining the legal library, and preparing and filling countless pleadings with precision and care. Your tireless efforts, attention to detail, and commitment to excellence have supported the work of the office in profound ways. You have been a steady and reliable presence, ensuring that the day-to-day demands of the legal world were always met with competence and professionalism. Your contributions have made a lasting impact, and your service is deeply appreciated. Also presented to Noah Eskana in appreciation of your faithful service in the Risk Management Department of Hamilton County Government during the period in which the department operated under Hamilton County Attorney's Office. Throughout those two years, you carried out your responsibilities with professionalism, care, and tireless dedication. Where proactively identifying hazards on county properties or responding to incidents at any hour of the day or not, you demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of others. Your compassionate handling of injury claims and your efforts to ensure fair and timely resolutions have made a meaningful difference in the lives of many. The protection you helped implement and the just outcomes you secured have benefited not only those directly affected, also the broader county community. Your service has contributed greatly to a safer, more responsive government, and your impact will be remembered with gratitude. Also Angela Duncan in appreciation of your faithful service in Risk Management Department of Hamilton County Government during the time in which the department operated under the Hamilton County Attorney's Office. During those two years, you served with dedication and integrity as the Health Information Privacy Coordinator in Hamilton County. You carried out your responsibilities with diligence and care, safeguarding the privacy of sensitive health information and trusting the various departments across county government. Your commitment to protecting the county, its officials, and its employees from practices that could compromise compliance with HIPAA regulation was evident in every action you took. Through your vigilance, training, and oversight, you fostered greater awareness among county staff and worked compassionately with individuals affected by possible lapse in information protection. Your work contributed meaningfully to the county's effort to safeguard sensitive information and promote sound privacy practices. Through your commitment to education and oversight, you helped cultivate a culture of awareness, responsibility, and respect for the privacy of those we serve. Now therefore be it resolved by the County of Hamilton that these certificates of recognition be conferred, presented this eighteenth day of June, twenty twenty-five.
At this time, I'd ask the mayor and the chairman if they'd like to make any comments before, before I'd ask if you all would allow them to pass by you.
No, Mr. Taylor, I look at this group and to me, I think about the years of talent. They go back into the, for you, back in the seventies and eighties, what you built and how you've kind of helped shape government with your career in the beginning and then went into the attorney's office. But I just look at the years of experience here, and I tell you what, I can't for myself say enough to appreciate what each one of y'all done and what you've meant to this community. How you've kept the best entrance of the taxpayers in the county is your foremost thought, and I just appreciate each one of you.
I'll be real brief. Reuben, as I've told you, your forty-seven years in county government will probably be unrivaled, and service to this county is certainly very unique and appreciated. And I think it says a lot about you that you chose to shine a spotlight on those who've worked with you all these years, particularly the recent years, and were grateful for their service to the county. Thank you, sir.
I would ask at this time if you all would allow them to pass by you. Thank you all again for this opportunity.
Commissioner Sharp, do you have a comment?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. I'm gonna try to comment. My meager seven years of experience on this board and county government and feeble literary background limit my ability to express the level of appreciation that I have for Attorney Taylor and the staff that has served his office in this county. For what I calculated at over a hundred and seventy years collective experience and cumulatively over a hundred and fifty years of legal experience. Attorney Taylor, though you so frequently present to this board and the courts and the public so eloquently, I know that, that your staff has contributed so greatly to the work that you present to us, and for that, I am so thankful. Not only has this office served Hamilton County for a whole lot of years in this board, but works with Commissioners for so many years individually, with guidance, legally, professionally, and the amount of experience that comes with tenure of this magnitude is irreplaceable. I commend you for your efforts to bring, to cultivate talent from within Hamilton County in an effort, in an effort to, maybe this is opinion, but to develop planning and succession of various offices in, within the attorney's office, to maintain a certain level of experience and expertise. Individuals rising up through the ranks, I believe, is something that's critically important in government, as government jobs do not offer much of what the private sector does to individuals who choose to work in these roles. And civil service is a huge part of that, as opposed to the opposite, you know, being the system of spoils, which has so often been harmful to major institution. Before I go too far off script, and I'm, and script, and by script, I mean the scribble that I've written down here over the last five minutes or so, I'm gonna stop because I know that I would never be able to fully express my appreciations. And I thank you so much, and staff, I thank you so much. Your services and counsel will be greatly missed. Chairman, thank you.
Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Taylor, you have been around county government quite a bit, and when I first came to the commission twenty years ago, the legal, the court system in Hamilton County and the legal, there was a lot of confusion. But over the last twenty years, you have quelled a lot of that, well, all of that confusion, and the people of Hamilton County has a lot of confidence in you and the department that you ran. And I want to commend you and thank you for your outstanding service, and I want to also thank your staff for providing us with the, with the advice and leader and the, and the information that helped us make good decisions. And so as you depart and your staff, some of them will depart, I can only say thank you. I would hope that at some point that this county commission can get out of the news. Once upon a time, it was city government, there was, they were in the news all the time, and they got their act together, and then the school board, they were in the news at one point all the time. And they somehow have been able to push that spotlight away from them, but somehow this commission, somehow this commission, we continue to make news, and I wish we could keep our heads down, do the work, and make government efficient, as you did, your department. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll be very brief. I'm not the mathematician Commissioner Sharp is, but all your year's service is very meaningful. It's more than just numbers, it's quality, and it's heart, what you've done. And I tell you, your leader, he's a man that I could pray with, and I appreciate that. And all of you have been so helpful to me. When I came in the middle of the term, you just accepted me, told me what I needed to do, and, and I was very appreciative of that. Thank you. I will always appreciate the service of, of Reuben Taylor and the whole staff. Thank you very, and those of you who are staying, thank you for staying. Those of you who are going, we wish you the best. Thank you.
Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To my friend, Reuben, County Attorney, I love you, I love you very much. My family loves you, my wife, my children, they all know you very well, and they love you very much. We, we started in county government in two thousand and ten together. I mean, you were already here, but we started, you mentored me, you told me what I should say, what I shouldn't say. You helped me with community issues, you helped me with many issues, I mean, even campers on the front lawn of the courthouse. I mean, you've been a stellar attorney, you've been wonderful. You're the reason that Hamilton County, one of the reasons Hamilton County is as successful as it is today. Your staff, you have been so wonderful to me and to our endeavors for trying to push county government forward. I thank each and every one of you from the bottom of my heart. I wish you all well in your next adventures. And the ones, like you said, the ones who either are going to stay, thank you for staying. The ones that are going to be going on to new careers or new adventures. I wish you nothing but the best and good health and God bless you. And thank you for being so good to me. Thank you.
Mr. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I made a long speech on how appreciative I was to Attorney Taylor and I thought it to be an honorable thing. In fact, he corrected me last week. In fact, it was his staff that made the difference in his office. And so I think it's an honorable thing that you would bring the staff and let the public see exactly who it was and what they did. And so thank you for your great years of service to this county. And staff, thank you as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah. Attorney Taylor, I fully intend for us to have, we're going to single you out next week. Your recognition for all the things you've done for us. I'm going to talk to your staff today and then next week I'm going to talk about you. I'd like to thank the staff. I think Neil and I go back to 1992 in our goodwill days. And but I think of all the times you've helped me out, Paige, you know, you were always kind of like the glue behind everybody. I think about one case in particular, it took nine months to get settled, the case up by the Dollar General and Signal and how much I appreciated you guiding me through the many government necessary laws, loopholes, direction, whatever it took to take care of the families that were being bothered by the person in that area. And I just, I learned a lot in that process, as I did in every process. And I'd like to thank you all for the support you've given me and certainly to Attorney Taylor. And Mr. Taylor, I look forward to seeing you next week. Thank you.
Mr. Shipley.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you to each one of you because during my short time being here, you've always been good to me. Neil, we worked together a long time, WWTA. I do appreciate every one of you and those that are leaving, wish you the very best. Those who are staying, we'll all work together and we'll make the best of this. Everything will work out and everything will be good. And thank you for everything.
Attorney Taylor. Marks of good leaders puts himself aside for the goodness of the team. And it's obviously that your leadership has been there for your team and your team has excelled. I sit in here thinking about, as you're reading those resolutions, thinking about the number of years and it's remarkable, the number of years and the talent that you have on your team. And I really appreciate the contribution that they've done. There's at times that I've asked for things and there's always been results. Even when I was wrong, there was pushback saying no. And that's needed. I mean, you have to say no because you're in the best interest of the county. And who is the county? It's the taxpayers is the county. It's those that put their faith in us to deliver results and you in delivering results with the team. And you've got, in my opinion, you've got a great, awesome team there. So team, thank you for your service. Proud of you and proud of what you've done for the county and will continue. Thank you. Hey. That said, we'll go ahead and get back on our agenda. So Madam Clerk, minutes needing to be entered and recorded for the recess meeting on May the 28th, 2025. The agenda session, May the 28th, 2025, the regular meeting of June the 4th, 2025, what would be the will of the commission? Second, Mr. Graham made the motion. Commissioner Smith seconded that motion. No lights are on. Standing for comment at the mic, that will roll call.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Helton.
Yes.
Dr. Highlander.
Yes.
Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp.
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley. Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Chairman Eversol.
Yes. And then we'll have one report enter into the record.
Will do.
Okay. With that, we'll begin with resolutions. We're going to make some changes to the resolutions and in the order of sequence, if it's okay. We're going to start with resolution 625-59, which is the Plan Hamilton. I think once we get these two resolutions done, we'll kind of clear out the room a little bit. So no objections, we'll do that. So Commissioner Chauncey.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Madam Clerk, please read 625-59, please.
Resolution 625-59, a resolution for the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners to adopt Plan Hamilton as the regional plan for Hamilton County.
Move to approve. Second, Mr. Chauncey made the motion. Commissioner Smith seconded that motion. Commissioner Shipley.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Is Nathan Jamway in here? Nathan, you care to come up here because I need to clear up something for going further on this vote. In our conversations recently, an evening in my last town hall, which was about eight days ago, Plan Hamilton was not to be in this vote today on McDonald Farm. McDonald Farm not in this vote. And all of a sudden I wake up and I see where Chamber Commerce says, the entry didn't here. So it's clear that up today before the vote starts that McDonald Farm did not end this vote.
That's correct, Commissioner. If you look at the place type map for Area 13, which is Sail Creek, McDonald Farm was intentionally left with no recommendations as we continue to look into options for that property moving forward.
Chairman, while I've got the floor here, I do want to say one thing. I believe for Chamber Commerce or anybody writes a letter to the paper or the paper releases a letter like that, we should have knowledge of that because I woke up to a swarm of bees the other morning because people felt like I lied to them and I hadn't. Some pieces of that article, I totally, I don't know if they're good pieces or not. And if somebody is involved in that article wants to come up here and say something, you're more welcome. But when I see that, it is commission, our administration, and everybody looked bad to, the appearance there was $3 billion and 1,000 jobs. And it made it look like we just shunned them out, we didn't own them, but that's, I can't find any facts to that. So if somebody got some facts to that. Yeah, there you are, Mr. Wood.
Commissioner Shipley, I'm sorry, I didn't hear all of the questions.
Well, $3 billion and 1,000 jobs, nobody here has ever heard of that, but it was printed in the paper. So it makes this commission, our administration, our mayor, and everybody looked like we overlooked something. And I think a project of that nature would have been brought to us and we could have found the place if it wasn't McDonald Farm put a business of that nature here. So explain that.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you for repeating that. Typically, when we have economic development projects, the state, a lot of times the state is sending us a request for information. And the request for information is asking us usually first, do you have a location that this company can locate on that is ready? Right? And so making sure that the site is ready is the key. And so for those of you that know some of the history in Chattanooga, we actually lost the first automotive project that looked here. So Toyota looked at Enterprise South before Volkswagen. They turned the site down because the site wasn't ready. And there are a bunch of reasons why it wasn't. And so for us, the request for this project required the ability for them to start construction within a pretty short period of time, which means that to be able to start construction within a short period of time, you need the site under control, generally owned by the local government. You need zoning in place so that there's certainty that the zoning is already approved, they don't have to go back for permission. And ideally, you have a path to have infrastructure. If it's not there already, in a perfect world, it's there already and you're going to compete against other sites that have it. Or there's a plan to bring that infrastructure to the site. And ideally, that, what a plan to bring infrastructure to the site means is engineering has been done, but it hasn't started construction because that eliminates a short term, that eliminates a six to nine month design period. And so, and we've shared a little bit of this in the past, typically when we have the state sends us those projects, those are confidential. We tend not to share them. When we have projects that are substantial that we don't have a location for, we typically share that with the mayors. And in this case, it was also shared with Dan Reuter from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so I shared it with Mr. Reuter specifically to make sure he understood that we were losing opportunities because we did not have sites that were ready for manufacturing. That project only required 80 acres. So it was not a huge site that was required, but the timing wouldn't work. Our anticipation for that project, it was frankly, it would have been pretty significant. The only, the only available industrial property, I shouldn't say that, the only industrial property we have that is already zoned and has infrastructure is an Enterprise South. All of that property is spoken for by Volkswagen. All of it and anything, including the property where Novonix will locate, has to be used for automotive industry. And this was not an automotive sector project. This would have been in the pharmaceutical sector. So if you're watching kind of what's happening at the national level, certainly the presidential administration has a strong push for manufacturing across the US. Tariffs are coming into play. And so there are a couple of industry sectors that are announcing, and I shouldn't say industry sectors, there are a number of companies that are announcing very large capital investment plans. Microsoft has done it, Apple has done it, Eli Lilly has done it. And these are in the tens and hundreds of billions of dollars. And so those projects that they've, that when they've made those announcements and you read them in the newspaper and the Wall Street Journal, they are now scouring the country for locations where they can go.
And I appreciate what you're telling me, but the bottom line was we haven't failed here and nobody failed. We all know McDonald Farm is years away from being ready for a building site.
I would say we could have had the farm ready for that project.
You think?
Yes.
Can we get the record straight because we need name and address.
I'm so sorry. Charles Wood, 200 Manufacturers Road, Chattanooga, Tennessee.
Okay, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the resolution, got a statement, just for Area 7 to change the method of calculating developable area from density, from gross to a net density basis. Specified that certain land features potentially include, but not limited to water bodies, ponds, karst areas, mines, steep slopes and all infrastructure, including stormwater wastewater facilities are to be protected from development, excluded from net density calculation. Strictly Area 7 because of the rock structure as well as lakes. So go from gross to net. That would be my amendment.
Second, Mr. Baker has asked for an amendment to 625. I'm sorry. Can I carry it on? Are you on? I kind of jumped on here.
Chairman, you're still chairing.
Okay.
So I'll let you.
I'll take it. You want to amend to include Area 7 to net versus gross, is that correct?
Gross versus net. Or, I'm sorry, net versus, that from gross to net. Thank you. I've got the verbiage here. Fillable acres.
Okay. And that was Mr. Baker. Second by Mr. Highlander.
Again, it's just Area 7.
Okay. Commissioner Shipley.
Can I add Area 13 to that? It's the whole county you're doing. All right.
So we've got on the table, amend Area 7 only.
Oh, it is?
And Commissioner Shipley wants to make it the whole county, but it didn't get a second. So we need a motion.
I can be simpler to make it to old county, but it's going to.
So you're making a motion or is Commissioner Baker changing his motion?
I'm making the motion to make the whole county.
Two's all you can have, so. So two's all you can have. We can take his motion, so that'll be the second because it does not include the original. So Commissioner Shipley.
Chairman.
So I need a second for the whole county.
I'll second, but could we ask Commissioner Baker if he'd be willing to amend his, change his amendment? Richard, would you be willing to change yours and the entire county?
I mean, if that's the will of the body. Specifically talking about Area 7, but if that's the will of the body, I'm happy to. Depends what y'all want to do. So, yes, I am.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Second's still holding. Do you agree? So the second's still holding, so we're still, so Baker's amended his amend from Area 7 to the whole county. Okay. Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of questions for a couple of people. Can it be all right? First question, if I ask Charles Wood to come back to the podium?
Sure.
Charles.
Yes, sir.
So that opportunity for growth in the business sector, manufacturing sector, manufacturer was pretty well left out of this plan, correct?
It is.
Yeah. So would it be difficult for you all to do an impact study on that particular project and report it back to us?
No, we can, we can run it and get it back to you next week.
Okay. I, I, I would greatly appreciate that. I mean, I know that a lot of people don't want the farm developed and we don't know if it's going to be developed or not developed, but it was bought for development. That was what our predecessors bought it for, that's what the former mayor bought it for. I, I think there's room out there, in my opinion, there's room out there for both, for agriculture and for development and maybe some new homes. But we won't know that if we don't study it. So I'd appreciate that. Also, I'm not sure who wants to speak for the RPA, but I have RPA questions. Is that all right? Thank you, sir.
Karen Rennick, Chattanooga Hamilton County Region Planning Agency.
So Karen, in the plan, farmland or farmland use in agriculture was kind of just not overlooked, but left out. You know what I mean, as far as the verbiage? It wasn't in the verbiage. Can you explain that?
Sure. And we have received the emails and communication about that. So it's a good opportunity to say Plan Hamilton is a plan for the physical development of Hamilton County. And part of that important community components is farming and agriculture. As you know, from last week, much of the future land use for the unincorporated county is countryside residential. Language from the description of what that is includes the county's agricultural uses related to production of crops, livestock, forestry uses and agricultural service businesses ranging from roadside vegetable stands or feed and seed stores to large I'm reviewing some specifically from Area 7. So a couple of statements, not only do these agricultural uses add to the rural character of the area, but they also provide many benefits to the local communities such as healthy food sources, educational programs, agritourism opportunities, and improved environmental function. Another statement of policy, work with national, state, and local conservation organizations to develop a program for purchase and protection, environmentally sensitive lands, prime agricultural parcels, and recreational assets. And then last, a strategy to initiate new strategies to preserve rural lifestyles, agricultural production, and associated land. So we did hear feedback on the importance of agriculture. It is important, it's included as part of our rural character. This is a, remember this is a place type, this is a plan. Those farms still have their current A1 zoning and all the protections from the State of Tennessee Farmland Protection Act, which we do pay attention to, because that's the act that says what local governments can do to regulate farming. And so all those are still in place. And if anyone wants to talk afterwards, I'll be around to talk about it more specifically.
And the state protections supersede our, anything that we do here?
That's right. It was established to protect agricultural functions, and it limits what cities and counties can do to regulate.
Okay. One other question that was given to me was that if a family farm was to be passed on from family member to family member, the time of which the farm, the farm was in probate court, does that, is that a non-conforming use of the farm? Do they lose anything during that process?
So that farm, I think all farms are probably zoned, or most all farms are zoned A1 agriculture, and that zoning is still in place with those uses. So again, the plan is place type, future land use, agri, that countryside residential includes both A1 and currently R1 zone property, but that zoning for that farm would continue. And I think the intention and the hope of many people is that that would continue as a farm.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of people here with a lot of questions still that are not, not answered. And this is very, as everybody here's for, very important that we get this right. You know, if we don't change anything, we keep doing what we're doing, we're still within our zoning regulations and rules and regulations. So, so it's not a barn burner. I mean, we don't have to pass this today. And what I recommend for this resolution and the next one is that we table them. And I'm going to do that in the form of a motion. I, I feel like that there's enough there that, that we don't have to scrap everything, but I think we take the good and the bad and the ugly out of both of them. We come to the table and we get this right, or we try to get this right. What we have before us today, in my opinion, neither one of them are right. Neither one of them address everybody's issues. So I think that we can make some compromises on a lot of things in this, both plans. So I make a motion that we table, and I don't know if I can do it for the next one, hadn't I read, but...
Sorry, we've only got one on the table now.
Yeah. So I'll, I intend to make the same motion the next one, but I make a motion that we table this for further discussion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We've got a motion to table by Commissioner Graham and seconded by Commissioner Sharp. Got some more lights on, Mayor?
Yeah, I just thought I'd clarify a few things, because there's confusion across the board, and to whatever extent, our staff can help answer questions. For those of you who are attending a county commission meeting, I have never sat in this seat before. I do not normally sit over here, but there aren't any other seats here. And we're all grateful that you're here, but David Roddy's on vacation, and so I'm playing Roddy today. To clarify on manufacturing opportunities, I think Charles Wood is using as an illustration that because Chattanooga and Hamilton County does not have much manufacturing zoned land left, that when an RFI, which is a very broad solicitation for information about sites across the state, when it goes out, we're not in great position, as other populated communities are not in great position to answer that. For the public to know and for commissioners to know, many of y'all know this, I am in constant communication with the Commissioner of Economic and Community Development. Every major opportunity that this county has seen over the last two and a half years, he will usually text or call me about. This was not a realistic opportunity for our county. I understand what he's, the point he's trying to make is we need more manufacturing land. We all understand that there's not as much manufacturing land in Hamilton County as there used to be. Part of the reason for that is that we're building a baseball stadium on a manufacturing site right now in downtown Chattanooga. For 150 years, for 150 years, going back to this place, becoming the Dynamo of Dixie, coming out of the Civil War, you built stuff in the manufacturing hub, not just of Chattanooga or Hamilton County, but of the region, was in Chattanooga, where there's infrastructure, where rail passed through, where there now are three interstates that converge. And so the assumption that what the city doesn't want gets pushed out into the county, I reject. It is overly simplistic. That's not a full explanation. And as much as I respect our friends at the Chamber of Commerce, one thing that I realized in the first few weeks that I was on the job was that the incentives that these 11 commissioners have and that I share are not aligned with different organizations that we often work closely with. And the Chamber of Commerce is one of them. Sometimes our incentives are aligned, sometimes they're not. At the end of the day, these 11 represent y'all, 11 different districts. I try to understand the needs of the entire county. With little kids, as best we can, we try to look 20 years out, maybe 30 years out. What's in the best interest of our county long-term? What's in the best interest of our children? What's in the best interest of taxpayers? To move any dirt, to make any site ready at McDonald Farm, that dollar amount begins at about $100 million. We know that to make 500 acres pad ready takes you over $200 million. Well, Hamilton County doesn't have this kind of money. This is not a site that the state of Tennessee is actively marketing. You can call Tennessee Economic Development, they'll tell you that. You can call your state representative or state senator, and they will tell you that. It's not to say the farm doesn't have massive potential. It does have massive potential, but it's been misrepresented. And in some ways, I think it's been misrepresented to make up for decisions that have been made about land in the city of Chattanooga. It does not have a role in this conversation, in this debate, which is about y'all. It's about your communities. It's about the district that Commissioner Highlander and Chairman Eversol represent. It's about southeast Hamilton County, where Lee Hilton represents. It's certainly about north Hamilton County and the traditions of these communities, many of which precede and predate the creation of the city of Chattanooga. Sail Creek's where the county started. Greg Vidal will tell you that on land he owns, people have been living in the Birchwood community for 200 years. And what we are up against is seemingly an intent to just push the extra things, the development that isn't happening or that they don't want in the city out into the county. We're open to all options, but it does not make sense for taxpayers that for the first time in 160 years, we would say, well, we're going to take a plush farm on the Ray County line, closer to Dayton, far closer to Dayton than any population center in Hamilton County, by the way. So economic experts have already told us the vast majority of jobs, if there are ever jobs at McDonald Farm, would not be people who live in Hamilton County. Right? And so my incentive here is not to rush to a ribbon cutting and tell y'all we've got good news. My incentive is to do right by y'all and do right by my children, and that's the incentive I've seen from these 11. And so while I understand that right now, Hamilton County is not in position to respond to an RFI, particularly one like this one, that had a deadline of December of this year, totally unrealistic that that site with virtually no infrastructure could be turned into a pad-ready site by the end of this year. Just so you know, we've seen the RFI. It was absolutely not, we were not a candidate for it in any way, shape, or form. We understand the point that's being made, but it should not interrupt this very diligent process that commissioners have spent hundreds of hours on, and people in this room have spent thousands of hours on. They don't have to be conflated. And it's also, I'll close with this, is also not helpful, that there's been a complete misrepresentation that agriculture land has gone away in a plan that was intended to guide growth. As Nathan Janeway, our Development Services Director, has very aptly pointed out, we don't have an issue with people considering converting subdivisions to farms. Right? What we have under consideration is the possibility of family farms being converted to subdivisions. So that's what we're trying to guide. I mean, hear me say very clearly, whether it's McDonald Farm or other farms, where appropriate and where possible, like Representative Vidal, let's let rural Hamilton County be rural as it's been rural for hundreds of years, even as the region has thrived, okay? And that's not to say, that is not to say you can't build homes. You can build homes, and you can build them appropriately. And we've had those conversations with home builders. But now, when this conversation gets hijacked, because we want to talk about manufacturing, which is a totally half-baked concept in rural parts of the county, where there is not hardly enough infrastructure for residential development, let alone major manufacturing, it distracts from the point. And the point is that many of these gentlemen, our staff, and members of the public, have worked diligently on a plan that ought to be discussed and deliberated on further, but I did want to clarify for the record that there have been a few misrepresentations.
Okay, we got a table on the table. So we're going to stop discussions. Mayor, apologize. I'll let you go. I do thank you for jumping on the bandwagon on January 14, 2023. You and Nathan, when we met and talked about Plan Hamilton, what it meant to our community, thank you for jumping on the bandwagon with us. That's important. So what we'll do is, we're going to take a vote, to table, it's motions on the table to table this. So Madam Clerk? Doesn't have to be a date certain. Not for table. Eight, be super. Okay, to table it, Madam Clerk? Yes means table, no means no table, so.
Ready to call roll?
Roll call, yeah.
Mr. Baker?
I'd rather vote, but yes.
Mr. Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Dr. Highlander?
I would rather vote.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
No. I think we needed to vote on it.
Table passes.
Table passes. So 625-59 is tabled. Okay, we'll go 625-60.
Madam Clerk, please read 625-60, please.
Resolution 625-60, a resolution for the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners to adopt Plan Hamilton with amendments as the regional plan for Hamilton County.
And motion to table.
Second.
Mr. Chauncey made the motion to table. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. Tabled. Go straight to the votes. So Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
No. I think we needed to vote on it.
Table passes.
Table passes. So 625-59 is tabled. Okay, we'll go 625-60.
Madam Clerk, please read 625-60, please.
Resolution 625-60, a resolution for the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners to adopt Plan Hamilton with amendments as the regional plan for Hamilton County.
And motion to table.
Second.
Mr. Chauncey made the motion to table. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. Tabled. Go straight to the votes. So Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes.
So 625-60 is tabled as well.
Since the items are tabled, there's no discussions further on the items today.
Basically means nothing's happening right now.
I'll talk about it at the end, I guess. I think people, I think people may, I think their commissioners.
I got a new watch.
Also, it tells me to make a email, there's some things I have to send to me.
Okay, Madam Clerk, deputies, if you will, do me a favor.
Let's, let's stop conversation inside, move, move people out that wants to conversate so we can continue. We got a long agenda. Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution 625-18. Read captions, please.
Did you say 18 or 8?
18.
18.
18. I'm sorry. I've got it entered wrong. It's, it's actually 08.
Okay.
625-08.
Okay.
My fault.
It's okay.
Resolution 625-8, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions and the bonds and owes of notaries previously elected.
What would be the will of the commission?
Move to approve.
Deputy?
Second.
So Commissioner Sharp made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-9 passes. 625-10.
Resolution 625-10, a resolution making an appropriation to Signal Mountain Middle High School in the amount of $3,501.02 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 2.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Mackey made the motion. Sound like Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-9 passes. 625-10.
Resolution 625-10, a resolution making an appropriation to Signal Mountain Middle High School in the amount of $3,501.02 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 2.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Mackey made the motion. Sound like Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-8 passes. 625-9.
Resolution 625-9, a resolution approving the purchase of three motor vehicle license plate renewal kiosks amounting to $55,500 for the county clerk's office and authorizing the county clerk to sign any documents necessary to implement this resolution.
Move to approve.
Second. Mr. Highlander made the motion. Commissioner Sharp seconded the motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith? Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-9 passes. 625-10.
Resolution 625-10, a resolution making an appropriation to Signal Mountain Middle High School in the amount of $3,501.2 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 2.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Mackey made the motion. Sound like Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call. Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-10 passes. 625-11.
Resolution 625-11, a resolution making an appropriation to Udoa High School in the amount of $3,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 10.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Commissioner Mackey seconded the motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-11 passes. 625-12.
Resolution 625-12, a resolution making an appropriation to East Hamilton Youth Association in the amount of $845.85 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 7.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Mackey made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander? Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-10, or sorry, 625-11.
12.
625-12 passes. 625-13.
Resolution 625-13, a resolution approving the expenditure of funds in the amount of $40,000 to Hamilton County schools for purchase and installation of a digital sign at Hardy Elementary School, with a portion of funding from the project from discretionary bond funds, general fund discretionary funds, and general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 4.
Second.
Mr. Smith made the motion. Sound like Commissioner Graham made the second, because that's correct. And no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-13 passes. 625-14.
Resolution 625-14, a resolution making appropriation to Alpine Crest Elementary School in the amount of $1,181.6 to Rivermont Elementary School in the amount of $1,181.6 to Chattanooga High School Center for Creative Arts in the amount of $1,181.6 to Normal Park Museum Magnet Lower in the amount of $1,181.6 to Normal Park Museum Magnet Upper in the amount of $1,181.6, Red Bank Middle School in the amount of $1,181.6, and to Red Bank High School in the amount of $1,181.5 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 6.
Move to approve.
Second.
I heard like 30 people say move to approve.
Appreciate the support.
Sound like, sound like Commissioner Mackey.
Now, second.
And Commissioner Highlander seconded. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-14 passes. We're going to bundle 625-15, 625-16, please.
Resolution 625-15, a resolution making appropriations to East Ridge Nitty Child Fund in the amount of $1,000, East Ridge Animal Shelter in the amount of $1,000, and to East Ridge Community Food Pantry in the amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 8. Resolution 625-16, a resolution making an appropriation to Spring Creek Elementary School in the amount of $3,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 8.
Move to approve. Second.
Mr. Chauncey made the motion. Sound like Commissioner Baker seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-15 and 625-16 pass. We're going to bundle 625-17, 18, and 19, just 17 and 18 only, please.
Resolution 625-17, a resolution making appropriations to Net Resource Foundation in the amount of $7,382.2 to La Paz Didiós in the amount of $1,000, to Alton Park Development Corporation in the amount of $1,000, and to East Lake Neighborhood Association in the amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 11. Resolution 625-18, a resolution making appropriations to Lookout Valley Elementary School in the amount of $1,000, to Lookout Valley Middle High School in the amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 11.
Make a motion for. Second.
Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Mackey seconded that motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-17 and 625-18 passes. 625-20, 625-21, you come up with those, bundle them, please.
Resolution 625-20, a resolution making appropriations to Hamilton County Schools Fund for Excellence in the amount of $1,781.11 to Snow Hill Recreation League, Inc., in the amount of $1,000, to Hamilton County Stars in the amount of $1,000, and to Highway 58 Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 9. Resolution 625-21, a resolution making appropriations to Brown Middle School in the amount of $1,000, Central High School in the amount of $1,000, Hunter Middle School in the amount of $1,000, Udoa High School in the amount of $1,000, Harrison Elementary School in the amount of $1,000, Wallace A. Smith Elementary School in the amount of $1,000, Udoa Elementary School in the amount of $1,000, and to Snow Hill Elementary School in the amount of $1,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 9.
Move to approve.
Mr. Graham made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-20 and 625-21 passes. We're going to bundle 625-22, 23, 24, and 25, please.
Resolution 625-22, a resolution approving the expenditure of funds in the amount of $625.04 to Loftus Middle School for an audio and lighting system upgrade, with a portion of funding from the project from discretionary bond funds, and the remainder from general fund discretionary funds as allotted to District 3. Resolution 625-23, a resolution making appropriations to Hickson Middle School in the amount of $3,000, and to Loftus Middle School in the amount of $2,374.96 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 3. Resolution 625-24, a resolution making appropriation to Charles H. Coolidge National Medal of Honor Heritage Center in the amount of $3,000 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 3. Resolution 625-25, a resolution making an appropriation to Hickson High School Alumni Association in the amount of $2,442.44 from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District 3.
Move to approve. Second.
Commissioner Highlander made the motion. Sound like Commissioner Sharp seconded that. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. So that means 625-22, 625-23, 625-24, and 625-25 pass. We will go back to the ends committee as a whole. We'll go back to committees, and we'll start 625-19. Mr. Graham.
Ms. Clerk, re-read that in the record, please.
Resolution 625-19, a resolution of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners establishing the structure and organization of the Hamilton County Attorney's Office.
Mr. Chairman, we discussed this last week very thoroughly. We had both input from the county attorney and the new incoming county attorney. This was all worked out. We fielded questions this week, so I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
So Commissioner Graham made the motion. Mr. Smith seconded that motion. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I want to thank the legal committee for the work that they did on this resolution. I think it's, it appears to be a pretty good resolution. I, I am a little concerned that we don't have a contract. I believe that that aspect was built in previously to protect the county from an attorney who may decide to leave at a moment's notice. That's something that I think we could have done, but if the will of the commission is to move forward without that, I will not raise a stink. There is one word in the resolution, and I apologize, I do not have the resolution in front of me, that I think should change, and that word is "shall," where it states that the mayor shall appoint the county attorney. I believe, according to statute, TCA 56112, it certainly here grants the power of appointing a county attorney to the mayor, but does not require it. I would like to motion to amend that we replace "shall" with "may." And just "shall," from "shall" to "may" would be my motion.
Second.
So we have a motion to amend and a second on the floor. I guess, roll call, unless there's only a.
Can you confirm?
There's no lights, no one standing.
Can you confirm the second? Who made the second?
Second. Commissioner Sharp made the motion. Commissioner Smith seconded that motion.
Ready?
Yeah, we're ready for roll.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. So the amendment passes, and so now we'll vote on the amended resolution.
Yeah, as amended.
As amended.
If we could just get a new resolution to the clerk's office.
Okay. Attorney Taylor, can you make sure that happens, please? Thank you. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. So 625-19 passes as amended.
Correct.
Okay, we'll move into, let's talk finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Clerk, let's get started with 625-26, please.
Resolution 625-26, a resolution approving the purchase, delivery, and installation of fixtures and furniture from CWC Incorporated from the Omnia Partners Purchasing Cooperative, amounting to $92,351.07 for the new Hamilton County Forensic Center, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Move approval.
Second.
Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Beck seconded the motion. See no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. So 625-26 passes.
Madam Clerk, 625-27, please.
Resolution 625-27, a resolution to appropriate up to $8,550,000 in bond funds to the Hamilton County Schools for investments in major deferred maintenance projects as approved by the Hamilton County Board of Education.
Thank you, ma'am.
Move to approve.
Sound like Commissioner Highlander made the motion. Commissioner Shipley seconded the motion. Mr. Sharp, comment?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I certainly support this resolution. I just want to express my appreciation on behalf of the people of District 6 for the windows and elevator at Normal Park Museum Magnet. Those have been long awaited, and we're excited to have those improvements. Thank you, Chairman.
See no other lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes. 625-27 passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, 625-28, please.
Resolution 625-28, a resolution to amend the school's federal projects fund budget by $1,714,330, and adding revenue of $1,714,330 to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, to amend the self-funded projects budget, fund budget by $43,362,882, appropriating fund balance of $319,654, and adding $43,43,228 to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, to amend the general purpose fund budget by $16,952,34, appropriating fund balance of $11,262,290, and adding $5,689,744 of revenue to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, to amend the school nutrition fund budget by $687,481, appropriating fund balance of $538,531, and adding $148,950 of revenue to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a statement. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this will not affect the Magnus Feford. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And without a move approval.
Second. Mr. Smith made the motion. Sound like Commissioner Hilton squeezed in there at number two. Okay. See no more lights, no one standing, I guess, roll call.
Just to confirm, second, Hilton made the second?
Hilton.
Okay.
Yeah, Hilton's number two.
Gotcha.
Coming second.
All right, Commissioner Baker?
I'm going to squeeze in my vote, yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, 625-28 passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, without objection, let's bundle 625-29, 30, and 31, please.
Resolution 625-29, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to sign a grant agreement with a term beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, in the amount of $510,000 with the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services. Resolution 625-30, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to accept a 1.5 million Fast Track Economic Development Fund Grant from the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development, and to sign any and all grant-related documents on behalf of West Star Aviation LLC to assist with the company's expansion in Hamilton County. Resolution 625-31, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to accept a community development block grant for the recovery housing program in the amount of $750,000 on behalf of the McNabb Center, and requiring no match, and authorizing Southeast Tennessee Development District to provide grant administration services on behalf of Hamilton County.
Thank you ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion. Seeing no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, 625-29, 625-30, and 625-31 pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. 625-32, please.
Resolution 625-32, a resolution to authorize the payment of one-time stop-ins in the amount of $3,000 each for five employees totaling $15,000 with funds from the Felony Community Corrections Program Grant as approved by the Tennessee, as approved by the State of Tennessee Department of Corrections.
Thank you. Move approval.
Second. All right, so Commissioner Smith made the motion. Mr. Graham seconded the motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, 625-32 passes.
Madam Clerk, without objection, let's bundle 625-33 and 34, please.
Resolution 625-33, a resolution to relinquish Hamilton County's interest in a 1989 Pierce Pumper Tanker, 1987 Chevrolet Deep South Tanker, 1991 E1 Simon Duplex Custom Pumper, 1997 four-gas Spartan Fire Truck, 1993 E1 International Pumper, and a 1992 Ford Super Duty Mini Pumper Truck, co-titled with Mowbray Volunteer Fire Department. Resolution 625-34, a resolution accepting the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus equipment from Safe Industries for the Office of Emergency Management, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Graham seconded the motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, 625-33 and 625-34 pass.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, let's read 625-35, please.
Resolution 625-35, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to sign a contract amendment between the Tennessee Department of Health and the Hamilton County Health Department to increase the childhood-led poisoning prevention program grant from $289,800 to $495,000 for the fiscal years beginning July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2028.
Thank you ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Baker seconded the motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, 625-35 passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, 625-36 was polled last week. It is still appearing on the agenda, but that is why we're not taking action on it. It should have been polled.
Okay.
Thank you. Without objection, Madam Clerk, let's read 625-37, 38, and 39.
Resolution 625-37, a resolution to adjust the fiscal year 2025 general fund expenditures budget in order to reclassify expenditures related to leases classified under GASB 87, which governs accounting for leases, and GASB 96, which governs accounting for subscription-based information technology arrangements. Resolution 625-38, a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2025 general fund revenue and expenditure budgets for the termination of certain federal grants passed through the Tennessee Department of Health for grant funds previously awarded to the Hamilton County Health Services Division. Resolution 625-39, a resolution to amend the Hamilton County Fixed Asset Policy.
Thank you ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Graham seconded the motion. Seeing no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, 625-37, 625-38, and 625-39 pass.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, without objection, please read 625-40, 41, 42, and 43.
Resolution 625-40, a resolution accepting the proposal of Tetra Tech, Inc. to provide disaster debris monitoring service on an as-needed basis for Hamilton County beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028, with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution. Resolution 625-41, a resolution accepting the proposal of CRS Environmental Services, Inc. to provide disaster debris collection and disposal services on an as-needed basis for Hamilton County beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028, with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution. Resolution 625-42, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to expend funds and to enter into and execute a contract with Reagan Smith Associates, LLC for the design engineering services for the intersection improvements at Hunter Road and LeBron Starchy Drive for the amount not to exceed $174,700. Resolution 625-43, a resolution approving repairs and restoration of the Fireman's Fountain from Robinson Iron Corporation, amounting to $94,900 for the Parks and Recreation Department, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
Thank you ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. Seeing no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, 625-40, 625-41, 625-42, and 625-43 all pass.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, 625-44, please.
Resolution 625-44, a resolution to appropriate a total of $50,000 of unrestricted distributor opioid settlement funds to the Chattanooga Area Food Bank.
Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Graham sounded like he squeezed in there. Second. Seeing no lights, no one standing, roll call.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, 625-44 pass.
Madam Clerk, 625-45, please.
Resolution 625-45, a resolution determining the certified tax rate in accordance with TCA Section 67-5-1701, and adopting a rate as the tax levy for the year 2025 for Hamilton County, Tennessee.
Thank you ma'am. Move approval.
Second. Commissioner Smith made the motion. Commissioner Highlander made the second. Mr. Mackey?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Chair, uh, the assessor's in the back of the room. I wonder if he'd care to make a statement?
Marty Haynes, Assessor of Property.
Do you care to say a word about the new tax rate?
Sure. We are following the Constitution and a statutory requirement. The tax rate is, as has been discussed previously, the lowest since World War II. I think it's 1941. This is the lowest tax rate since then.
Uh, in your opinion, does the tax rate hit people in the city at the same rate it hit the outline areas?
Well, the tax rate is the same across the county. Yes, sir. Uh, the city of Chattanooga does have their own tax rate, though. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, seeing no more, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sharp?
Thank you Chairman. I was just going to expand on that. I think what my colleague from District 4 was getting at is the assessments. The assessments affected the people in municipalities more significantly than the outskirts of the county. Is that accurate?
That, that would be more accurate, yes. Uh, lower-valued homes, there are clearly more sales of lower-valued homes than there are higher-valued homes. And those did increase, uh, across all of the county in different areas at a higher rate. The lower-valued homes, uh, not just in the city of Chattanooga, but in other bedroom communities, did go up more substantially than some of the unincorporated areas. Yes, sir.
Right, which, and that, essentially what that translates to is those closer to Chattanooga experience the tax increases.
They, they very well made. Yes, sir.
And those out of nonincorporated generally receive a tax reduction.
In broad terms, yes, sir. Or about the same. Maybe not a reduction, but about the same. Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, thank you for answering that question, and thank you for responding to my emails, particularly about some, some specific areas that have experienced over 100% increase in their assessments, well over 100% increase. And I look forward to following up with you on that very soon.
Happy to.
Thank you. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no more lights, I want to say one thing, Mr. Haynes. Thank you and your team for what they do. I want to be clear about something, because I think there's some confusion. You, you bring us the tax rate.
Yes, sir.
Once you get it approved from the comptroller, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, so, and then this body either accepts or moves that number?
Yes, you do need to accept this, this rate. After that, you're on your own. You can raise it, you can lower it, if that would be your desire. But yes, you do have to accept this rate.
Yeah, I want to, I just want to appreciate you, because you brought this rate to us to approve today in 151, oh, whatever it is, but it's 151 rounded off.
151, 15157. So if you're rounding, it's easier to round at 152 than 151, but yeah.
So, so thank you, thank you and your team for the hard work you did here during this assessment.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, no more lights. I'm sorry, Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Haynes, is it possible for you to do a, a tax equity study that reveal the impact of the tax rate on city residents as opposed to people in the outline areas?
Yes, uh, depends on how detailed you want to get. We've, we've done a lot of those different things. We've looked at specific, I don't know that we've done it by city council districts since I am employed by the county. I focus more on the county. We, uh, we've broken it down previously just for our own information in the office for each county commission district, um, as to what the increases were per district, and some are larger geographic districts than others.
And, and at the end of the day, I would like to see fairness and equity, and numbers sometimes can be distorted.
Right.
So do I hear you saying that you would be willing to undertake a study?
Sure. We'll be happy to do, provide any information we can, if at all possible. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I very much would like to see that study done. We saw people, people today, uh, in the outline areas, they are supporting, they don't want development. And it pushes more the burden on city residents. And just want to see what the real story is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chair, if I can respond, if you all will tell me what you want to see in the study, what details, we'll do our very best to provide as much information as possible. I would ask if you could give us another month or so. We're still finishing up, uh, those folks who are in the office with the public right now. Uh, and that'll be ongoing till close to Independence Day. So if you could indulge us till sometime in July, but if you'll tell us what you want, we'll do our very best to provide what you're asking for.
Chair, we can do it either way. Either commissioners can send their questions and concerns to him, or I can gather them and take them to him.
If you want to. If you want to gather and submit, that would be a great idea. I'll do it. Thank you, Chair.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Haynes? All right, seeing no more lights, no one standing, roll call. You weren't standing, so.
I know, I know, because we're fast like an auction. Hey, Andrew Hickson, I live in Hickson. I've been up here a few times. I, I'd love to help you.
I need your address. I need your address.[1406.84]
You need my address? You're not a scare tactic or something? That's why people are scared to come up here and say anything? Uh, six oh seven Timber Ridge Drive, we're going to change that law one of these days, um, we, the people. Commissioner Mackey, I would love to help you gather questions and look at that, um, from a, just a common sense. I mean, you can look at taxes across the board. When you decrease or increase taxes, one or two things happen. People spend less money, people spend more money. Um, and also I would just challenge anyone that comes up to this microphone to, uh, give just honest answers because there are people watching, um, up here on YouTube and everything else. So the political non-answers, I mean, they're just kind of crazy and it happens a lot up here. So anyways, that's all I got, but I'm more than happy to talk with you after. Thank you, thank you.
Okay. See no lot, no lights and no one else standing? It is. If, if anybody wants to do this, let's, let's, let's revisit the rules. If you want to make comments, you're more than welcome to on any resolutions. We ask you to come to the sidewall so that we can get you recognized. Is, is it about this item? Okay, if you want to make comments about this, this item we're discussing now, it's the only ones we're making comments on. Is this resolution, it's at hand, which is talking about certifying the tax rate? If it's not about certifying the tax rate, I ask you to move to the back of the room and, or sit down. And then when the resolution comes up and it's read, if you want to make comments, then at that point, go ahead and move yourself to that sidewall so that the chair can recognize you. Okay, so you don't have any comments on this one? Okay, I need you to move that so you don't confuse me, apologize. Okay, all right, see no lights, no one standing for comment, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yeah.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, six twenty-five dash forty-five passes.
Madam Clerk, moving on to six twenty-five dash forty-six, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-six, a resolution adopting a budget of one billion ninety-five million six hundred seventy-eight thousand and twenty-five dollars for the fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, ma'am, move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion, Commissioner Baker seconded the motion. So this is our county budget. So see no lights, anyone in the general public want to talk about anything with our county budget? You want to talk about the county budget? Okay, you have three minutes.
Wait here.
It's fine.
Okay.
Your clock is running.
The county budget, Monty Bell, the homeless journalist, gray-haired fox, man with the trillion-dollar voice, pro se litigant. The county budget. I've been trying to get my records on how much you all have spent for all of these attorneys appointed and otherwise, in my legal matters, that I can't seem to get into the courts. So since you're talking about the budget and I have a documentation just dated yesterday from the Department of Justice telling you all to get Monty Bell his records for seventeen years of coming up here requesting them. You haven't done it yet.
Is that, is that a budget question or something?
It's a budget question because you've spent nearly a billion dollars defending me against the state. The state lost back in two thousand and eight, nine. Here are the records to show it.
Is there any questions you have about the budget we're presenting?
Where are the records, uh, pertaining to the amount of money that you all have spent on these attorneys?
That's not this budget. This budget is for the next year's budget. This is beginning July.
It's going to be a next year's budget too because you've denied me access to the court. You'll still be spending, let me tell you what I'm talking about. Just last night at the city attorney's office.
County attorney.
Just last night at the city attorney's office, he contracted with a bulk of attorneys. Some of them are going to be on your staff as of July the first. That's a budgetary situation. It's a, it's, it, it's not judicial. It, it, it deals with the legislative branch of government spending money to hire people. You got people coming from the city up here. You just passed a resolution here that changes.
What does that have to do with the budget?
May or, it's all about money and how you are spending the taxpayers' money. It's all about the money. Everything you do, whether you title it education, whether you title it RIFs, whether it's TIPS or TAFs, it's all about money. How are you all monitoring the money of the people? And why aren't the people getting the benefit of what you're constantly spending their dollars on? It comes in a bowl.
Is there, can, can you, can you put it in smaller bowls and tell me what you're talking about as far as money?
The case, you should have been in the courtroom with it instead of policing me, but I'll be back.
Okay.
It's all about the money.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. All right, Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, I'll be brief. Um, I'd mentioned some concerns last week regarding the budget. Those appear to not be concerns to other folks and, you know, to each their own, I suppose. But, um, as a result, um, I feel, I fear that the result of this budget by any true objective measure makes county government less accountable, less transparent and more open to waste and abuse. Failure to create an independent function of compliance as law calls for and the reduction in budget divisions reduces transparency and accountability. This, in my opinion, adds up to a rejection of good governance principles and neglect of our responsibilities under the law. I simply cannot vote for a budget, uh, or a resolution that fails our legal and ethical obligations. I think it violates our basic promise to taxpayers. And it creates an environment where waste and abuse of taxpayer funds can be more eas, can more easily occur, even by an innocent mistake by someone with good intentions. Simple for me, this is non-negotiable and for those reasons, I'm going to vote no on this budget.
I guess I'm confused with your statement there. Is there anything in specific in the budget that makes us not transparent?
Reducing, um, the number of divisions in the budget enables more money to be moved within divisions without the knowledge of this body. And, um, that is concerning me that I mentioned, uh, last week in the meeting, uh, with our CFO and, um, my understanding based on the conversation that we had is that that has not been changed. And that division is not in this budget any longer. I can't remember the exact total of dollars that it disperses throughout various divisions in the budget specifically. Lee, how many dollars, if I may, Chair, how many, how many, what was the, the, the total from the, um, supported agencies?
If you give me a few minutes, I can maybe find that. I do know what last year's was, or I can look up last year's. But this year's, it was all moved around into the different divisions where again, we, our intent was to improve accountability by moving them from a general supported agencies division into the actual division in which the services were being provided. So, um, I can come up, uh, I can at least get, let you know what last year's number was in just a second, if you'll give me a second.
That, that's up to the chair. If the chair has enough time for you, then I guess I do too.
How many seconds?
If you've got other things to discuss, but probably seventy-one or so.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to thank the financial staff and everybody that's been working on the budget. This year has been a very difficult year on budgeting. We don't have extra revenues. It was a very difficult year on our school system in our budget and we don't have the rev, we didn't, we didn't have the revenues that they required. But thank goodness we have the revenue to run the school system. So we didn't get a triple A bond rating with the three top bonding agencies by accident. And then we went through an exercise of borrowing two hundred and sixty million dollars in bonds for the future of this county and we were able to keep our triple A bond rating with the three bonding agencies. That is a huge, huge task and a feat that, that many counties can accomplish, but we have been able to do that. And that's because of the leadership in our finance team and all the team that you have working on this budget. So Lee, I appreciate you and I appreciate your team working on this. I appreciate our auditors. I appreciate everybody that keeps us straight and it keeps that bond rating where it is. And, uh, I just want to thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Commissioner Highlander.
Uh, I will yield to Mr. Browner if he's ready to go, but if not, I'll make a brief statement.
Okay, uh, and again, real quick, I, I should have some folks back at the office working on this year's number, but last year's number was six million nine hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars in supported agencies. I would venture to say it's within a couple of hundred thousand one way or the other this year, but, but you're basically looking at approximately seven million dollars, um, in supported agency funding. And again, all of those are detailed out, each of the supported agencies are detailed out in the resolution following this one that we'll be voting on, which is the supported agency or the nonprofit allocation.
Just briefly, I, I was going to state, since we had a minute or two, there were many, many highly, highly useful five oh one C threes that, that we probably either had to reduce or, or cut. And it's not because they're not good, it's not because we don't like them, but we have, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Finance Chair, but we have legal obligations for the sheriff's office, for education, for certain areas. And while I would love to give every needed agency more and more money, we are limited this year. We have a limited budget this year, less money's coming in and we've run out of three years, uh, three years of, uh, massive COVID money. So, uh, I, I appreciate all the efforts that you've done, you and your staff, Lee, to put all this together. Thank you.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, uh, start by thanking our Finance Chair, um, for probably the, 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 the best budget I've seen in seven years, uh, as, as it relates to being able to look for trends, um, being able to, you know, ask more pertinent questions because of the way it was laid out. So I wanted to say thank you. I want to thank the mayor for having that extra meeting, which I think we should do every time. I always appreciate the overs, overview, but you know, you know, the second cut of that is getting into the detail and that was very helpful. So I thank you and your staff for the, for the answers. So, uh, I just want to say it's probably the best process that I've seen in seven years. So thank you.
All right, see no more lights. Uh, Lee, you and your team, uh, great job assembling this. And, you know, I know Commissioner Smith and I have asked a lot of data and stuff to be pulled together for this and some of the other commissioners have as well. You, you all have always stepped up and always said, no problem. And you've, and, and pulled it. It's give us, gives us better view and a better track record of what we're doing. So thank you for your team showing us that history so we can, you know, this team. And I do appreciate again the, the second go around because there's times we do need to, to ask more questions versus just a presentation, go back and look at it some more. So I do appreciate that. So. Okay, no more lights, no one standing for comment, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith? Chairman Eversol?
Yes, uh, six twenty-five forty-six passes.
Sorry, Madam Clerk, let's move on to six twenty-five dash forty-seven, please.
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-seven, a resolution making appropriations to nonprofit charitable and civic organizations of Hamilton County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, ma'am, move approval.
Mr. Smith made the motion, Commissioner Baker seconded the motion. See no lights for comment? No one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yeah, six twenty-five dash forty-seven passes. That finishes finance while moving to delinquent tax. So Commissioner Mackey, six twenty-five dash forty-eight.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, Madam Clerk, will you read resolution six twenty-five forty-eight, please?
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-eight, a resolution establishing the minimum bid amount for certain parcels of property acquired by Hamilton County through previous delinquent tax sales, authorizing the author, offer of said parcels for sale at the minimum bid amount and authorizing certain said parcels to be offered for sale for an amount less than the total amount of taxes, penalty costs and interest accumulated against the property.
Uh, Commissioners, this is a standard, uh, method to get delinquent tax property back on the road. I make the motion to.
Commissioner Mackey make the motion, Commissioner Highlander second the motion. No lights, no one standing, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Mr. Smith? Chairman Eversol?
Yes, six twenty-five forty-eight passes will go to building and economics, so six twenty-five dash forty-nine.
Thank you, Chair. Madam Clerk, could you read six twenty-five dash four-nine?
Resolution six twenty-five dash forty-nine, a resolution to approve the firm of MTA Architecture and Planning for the design of the Saudi Daisy Middle School renovations and additions and utilize a construction manager at-risk procurement process and contract for the construction.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Hilton made the motion, Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion. There doesn't appear to be any lights. Roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey? Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Mr. Smith? Chairman Eversol?
Yes, six twenty-five dash forty-nine passes. Going to roads and zoning, Commissioner Johnson.
Chairman, Madam Clerk, please read six twenty-five dash fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two and fifty-three.
Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty, a resolution to amend the master list of roads and speed limits so as to accept the following district roads and to establish speed limits. Therefore, Harbor Chase Loop and Tell You Radway. Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty-one, a resolution to amend the master list of roads and speed limits so as to accept the following district roads and to establish speed limits. Therefore, James Creek Drive and Elizabeth Ann Way. Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty-two, a resolution to amend the master list of roads and speed limits so as to accept the following district road and to establish a speed limit. Therefore, Sir Anderson Court. Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty-three, a resolution to amend the master list of roads and speed limits so as to accept the following district road and to establish a speed limit. Therefore, Tailgate Loop Extension.
All right, move to approve. Second. Mr. Chauncey made the motion, Commissioner Highlander seconded the motion. See no lights and no one standing for comment, roll call.
Commissioner Baker? Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp? Commissioner Shipley? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversol?
Yes, six twenty-five fifty, six twenty-five fifty-one, six twenty-five fifty-two and six twenty-five fifty-three all pass. Okay, uh, six twenty-five fifty-seven and fifty-eight were both deferred to our July sixteen meeting. Fifty-six was pulled. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please combine six twenty-five fifty-four B and six twenty-five fifty-five B, please?
Resolution six twenty-five fifty-four B, a resolution to rezone from A-one agricultural district to R-one single-family residential district with conditions for property located at one zero three four zero East Springer Road. Resolution six twenty-five dash fifty-five B, a resolution granting a special permit for a residential plan unit development amendment with conditions for the properties located at one zero three three zero and one zero three four zero East Springer Road.
All right, move to approve. Mr. Chauncey made the motion, Mr. Graham seconded that motion. Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to put on the record that this is in addition to an existing approved Bud, uh, with public input. The developer is lining up the entrances to two subdivisions, um, as well as lowering the overall lot count from what the initial one was by adding this, uh, making the lots larger, getting the density to under, I think, two five or excuse me, two eight five right in that area. So, uh, we appreciate him listening to us. Thank you.
Okay, see no more lights, no one standing, um, conversation, roll call.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck? Mr. Chauncey?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Yes.
Dr. Highlander? Dr. Mackey?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Shipley? Mr. Smith? Chairman Eversol?
Yes, so six twenty-five fifty-four B and six twenty-five dash fifty-five B pass. That's all we have, Chairman. Okay, that's all on the agenda. We'll move into announcements. Uh, Commissioner Shipley?
No announcement.
Mr. Baker? Yeah, I mean, is it, can, can we have a discussion on Plan Hamilton, next steps? Do you want to do that after or? You can do it, we can start it right now if you want to.
All right, so I just want to get what everybody's opinion is on, you know, I mean, I had a meeting last night for two plus hours. And, you know, this process has been going on for me because we started early over three and a half years. And, you know, at some point I would like, I know there's a group that was working with, um, the home builders or whatever, you know, to come up with a compromise. And, and I know that was some discussion, maybe we were going to, as, I just, I would just like to get off the dime and, and make sure that we have a fair process. I mean, each part of our county is different, like where I live, we've got rock, we've got development, we've got, you know, road issues. Last night, we've got elementary school issues, high school still has a little room. Um, you know, there's, and I'd just like to get a plan going that makes sense, you know, how, so how do we create the compromise? How do we get people working together to, to come up with a solution that makes sense? I've got some great folks that are in the audience that have been very helpful for me. Um, you know, each area is different. That's why I suggested that we base it on, you know, net density, not gross, um, in seven. But, you know, I just, I just want to get this moving. I mean, I just, you know, I, or I just want to get it finished because it's, it's, it'll be a document that's a work in progress. But it's got to, it's, we've, we've pushed it, pushed it, pushed it. Let's, let's get the pro, the document and then let's work it, work the document. So just my thoughts.
So in order for the conversation going, we've got to untape it, take it off. We've got to get eight votes to do that. Okay, Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Mackey?
Mr. Chair, I have a, um, statement, but I think it can be better made by two people in the room. I want to ask Karen Rennick, Brian, um, when, when you all do your work, Karen, where the people on your board, are they, are they more inclined to promote development, Brian, or? What's, let me do it a different way. When we bought the McDonald farm, in your thinking, was it for economic development, namely factories and industry or what?
So is this an announcement or?
It, it is, it's my announcement, but I'm going to have them make it.
So you're going to, you're going to make an announcement, you're going to have somebody else make an announcement. It really needs to be your announcement. So if you want to announce something, so this is our announcement.
Well, what I, what? If I'm mistaken, when we made that purchase, did we make it with the intent of having economic development on that property? Beg your pardon? We did? Do you ever hear a conversation about economic development? Okay, that clears it up for me, Chair.
Commissioner Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a little, little off from what we've been talking about today, but it still needs to be discussed. I was, um, chairman of the diversity and equity committee, uh, since I've been up here. And I had not been given an assignment yet and, uh, a couple of weeks ago, maybe last week, I was given a notice that the, um, county commission should dissolve the diversity and equity committee uh, and to comply with the law. And, Mr. Chairman, I want to say to you that I appreciate, uh, you looking into this bill. Bill was, uh, sent down by the state and, uh, it said that we had to do away with that committee. Now, I have a couple of questions and, uh, maybe it's not for long discussion. I just want a yes or no question, uh, answer. Does this, um, can this, uh, committee be just with a stroke of a pen done away with? Does it have to be, have a resolution to do away with that committee? Is that?
Attorney Taylor, this is the one we discussed last week, I guess a week ago Monday.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, to answer Commissioner Beck's question, if the committee was established, I know the committee was established by the chairman, but I, I don't recall if the commission voted to adopt the committees that the chairman was recommending. If the commission voted to adopt the committees that the chairman was recommending, then I think of motion or resolution, uh, dissolving a particular committee would be in order. If it wasn't done that way, but just by announcing the chairman, it's not necessary.
So can, can we research and find out whether that?
I'll check with the clerk's office.
Find, find out if that committee was done by resolution or not. If it was resolution, then we need to create a resolution.
Yes, sir.
And it would, I think, be in our best interest to do that.
And second, I have a, a letter, a copy of a letter that I'm sure you sent to the mayor and asking about the impact on dissolving this committee and dissolving our efforts toward the diversity in our county. And so if that's ever going to be answered by the mayor or whomever, I'd like to know when and how we'll get it out to the public, the impact that dissolving all of these efforts would be on our county. We may have to give some money back if we pursue dissolving this committee and our efforts in this area. So let's make sure that we can get all of that lined up so that we don't suffer as a county trying to comply with what came down from the government, federal government to the states and down, down to us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I'll just please be sure, Mayor and I have had discussions on it, and I have no doubt that we'll be working close together on finding an applicable solution. And, because there are some things in it that has to go to the state comptroller, and I know Mayor's working diligently in this team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sharp.
Yes, Chairman, I can say something. I think my colleague had a comment. Did you have a light on?
You want to be, you want to forego your time for your colleague?
No, I don't want to do that.
Is that brotherly love here or what?
Well, you know.
I'll, I'll call on your colleague here.
I just want to try to set the record straight on something real quick. You know, it, it was mentioned earlier in our meeting today that, how was it said? That McDonald Farm's not even being marketed by the state. I just, my understanding is it's not being marketed because we've not rezoned it, and that's the only thing that's holding us up on that. That's how it's been explained to me. So, you know, I think this goes in the spirit of cooperation, transparency, and mutual effort to help move our county forward. I think we need to have these conversations about how we're going to address the need for future jobs and housing and roads and schools and all of these things out in the open, right? I was quite alarmed by a remark that was reported about wanting to keep certain bits of conversations private. We're, we're doing the work of the people up here, and, and we need to, we need to be open and have that conversation in the open, not, you know, tell people one thing and do something different. We're all, as it's often said, we're all in this together, right? We all have different ideas about how things ought to be done. But if we can be respectful in our openness and transparency, I think we can find a way forward that can benefit all of Hamilton County. And I want to encourage more conversations about that. You know, we have a very high percentage of residents in Hamilton County who lack the prerequisites for a lot of job opportunities in our growing job market. We have currently a lot of work going on nationally to try to encourage manufacturing to take place in the United States. And I would like to think that the people in this room would like to get our share of that, of those jobs in the future for the people here in our county. We got to have somewhere to put them. And I appreciate conservation, land conservation as much as the next guy, I truly do. And I don't know, maybe, maybe we could work, I do, and I could work, I think that there's a way to work potentially. We've done all kinds of creative things with financing to help support the procurement of additional land in our county for preservation, conservation, outdoor activities. But there's only so much land that has the amenities that are needed to support the expansion of jobs in our community. You know, it's, on a conversation I had this morning, I was talking to somebody, and we're talking about, you know, would you rather have a, you know, industrial park or park? It's like, that's almost like saying, would you rather go on vacation or go to work? I mean, everybody'd rather go on vacation, right? But we got to go to work at some point in time to make sure our bills are paid. And I just, I'm not taking a hard line on anything, but we need to have this conversation in public. We need to talk about it, we need to iron it out. And Chairman, I just wanted to get that off my chest, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Commissioner Mackey?
I wanted to thank Commissioner Beck for putting that item back in the public's view. The, the county has some responsibilities, and, and in keeping with the question, I just want to make sure that it doesn't just fall off and not get any attention at all. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you, Chairman. I want to thank all the commissioners who came out this morning for our, our field trip to the new Drug Recovery Court. I think we all had some concerns with their logistical issues, but the building is a fine repurpose, and I want to thank the mayor's office for seeing that along. It's an inexpensive way to get something done, and we just don't have a derelict building sitting there. We don't have to build it, we don't have to rent it. It's a really good move, I think, for the county. Also, want to welcome this new class of Sheriff's Department deputies. I guess this is, they're, they're pretty green, right, Sheriff? Yeah, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, I was going to, I had him on the agenda here to come up.
Okay. You want to do it in a minute? Do what? You want to do it in a minute after your comments?
Yeah, I've got him coming up after, after the mayor.
Just a minute. And I guess that's all I've got then.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner?
We, we had that discussion, and it sounds like Chief Roddy and the director have worked out all the logistical issues. We'll see how it performs, and I'm sure they'll make corrections if there are issues.
Yeah, I think for the record, I think according to our conversation this morning, that Carter's going to create a stop there, and there's also going to be, I guess we've got a van coming, and we've actually, that, we've got actually requisitions open for a couple hours. Thank you. Commissioner Chauncey? No one else. Commissioner Highlander?
Thank you. I also commend Commissioner Hilton and the group that works the mayor to get that Drug Court facility going, and, and I was concerned about transportation. They answered my questions very well, and, and the different agencies in the county, Park, I think Parks and Rec had donated a vehicle to transport them and, and different things. So it's, it was worth missing some sleep this morning to come out there and see that. It was very important. Thank you. I tell you, I would like, Chairman, I'd like to commend the people that the mayor commissioned about seven or eight months ago, nine months ago, you and he together got together a citizens' group to work on Plan Hamilton to make compromises and adjustments. I'm going to tell you, and they worked with Commissioner Hilton to be the liaison with the home builders and realtors, and we appreciate his doing that. I cannot tell you, we, several of us sat in on most of their meetings, since there were more than one of us, we tried not, we did not comment, we did not break sunshine, but we listened to the hard work they put in, and I cannot tell you how much I appreciated it. I drove to, up to Commissioner Shipley's district not wanting to cross the dam during a rough hour. I drove 42 miles from my house, the Sail Creek Fire Department, in heavy rain, and it was well worth it because we have some of the same issues in Sail Creek that we have in Birchwood and Harrison, and some of the very same, same issues. And the community input has been so great, and, and Mayor, I appreciate the mayor's putting that work group together and the, and the chairman putting the work group together, and they have just done yeoman's work. I cannot say how much they've done to work out a compromise, and that's why I wanted to vote today, but I, I yield to the majority of my fellow commissioners in not doing it. But I, I cannot tell you how much it meant to me and the work they've done, and I hope that we can come to a resolution, as Chairman, as Commissioner Baker said, very soon. And thank you very much for the time.
Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioner Graham, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't have an announcement, but several people here today actually are in my district. One young lady that's here was actually in my wedding, so I don't want to embarrass anybody, but, but, and the young man that's going to be in this class that you're about to talk about, he's from our community as well, very proud of you. So I wanted to thank everybody from my district, thank you for being here, and that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Attorney Taylor? Mayor?
I'd just like to thank you all for partnership through the budget process. All of you were very helpful to our office, and, and Chairman, I think in hindsight, the hearing that we had was a dedicated opportunity to dive deeper and appreciate the way that you handled questions to finance upfront. And, you know, it's, not to overstate it because it was a tight budget, and there weren't a whole lot of moving parts, given the tightness of it, but the budget's a reflection of the priorities of the county, and I think at least almost all of us agreed with the direction that we're going. And then also like to just point out, I'm still a relatively new resident of Commissioner Baker's district, and yesterday he hosted a community meeting, much like this commission meeting. When I got there, the fire marshal told me there was no room for me, and then another guy said, well, just come on in here, and I didn't really know who was in charge, but it was that sort of a packed house. The interest in, in these issues and the planning, you know, the delicate planning considerations in every part of the county is a little, and I know there's some members of the public who are probably going to speak to wrap this meeting up, but I will say, I found it, even there in my own community, very heartwarming how many people are engaging. I think, you know, many of y'all were like me in that we wish this commission room was packed with interest in every subject we deliberate over, and I, I will say that that was one part of the Plan Hamilton process that was very encouraging to me, as we all saw and, and met, not, not just saw the engagement, but it gave us an opportunity to meet a lot of very passionate people across our county.
My wife couldn't get in last night.
You wouldn't let her in?
I know.
Okay.
Sure. I, I apologize. I had a young lady that sat next to me my first year and a half on the commission, and Ms. Kathleen Jeter, former commissioner's here, and I just wanted to recognize her and appreciate her being here. And I will say, Mayor, I, as Chairman of the Education Committee and former school board chairman, I tried to get a school board meeting, was told I couldn't go in, it was overpacked, so I stood outside and listened. Thank you.
Okay, Sheriff's Office, got some announcements for us?
Chair, Commission, thanks for having us. Yeah, we have six corrections deputies here.
Name address.
Brian Busch, General Counsel for the Sheriff's Office, 600 Market Street. We have six corrections deputies here who just started on Monday. They go through a seven-week course, this is Deputy Marlowe, who's with the correction services, and they learn all manner of things. I'll let him talk to the specifics, but I just want to introduce them, the six deputies, if you'll stand up. They come from... And learning a bit about each of them, they come from varied backgrounds and experiences, and I'm just glad that they've brought those experiences to the Sheriff's Office. Deputy Marlowe's going to talk to the, to the specifics of what they learned. I'll give them a chance to speak.
Good morning. Deputy Jared Marlowe with Hamilton County Sheriff's Office, Corrections Training Professional Development Unit. These six new cadets are going to go through about 292 hours worth of training. Majority of the standards are set by TCA code or TCI standards, who mandates us, gives us our minimum standard we have to abide by in the jail. They're going to go from civilian to deputy in seven weeks. They're going to learn everything from case law down to the basic fundamentals of handcuffs, and the ones that are over the age of 20, they'll go through 32-hour basic firearms courses as well.
Gentlemen, welcome to the county. Thank you. Sheriff, you keep bringing them in. Seven out of 60 left. That's awesome. Okay, I want to make sure there's no more lights, right? Okay, no see any more lights. From the chair, two and a half years ago, I started this process of saying, you know, we could do things different, we can get better results. True definition of insanity is we try to do the same thing over and over and over and over, but we expect it to be different. And I, I still see us as a county, we do things like that when we get around, you know, growth and development, we, we kind of, we, we want different results, and why not a better idea that, you know, I think, Mayor, when, when you and I sat at a boardroom table in October of '22, and I had a resolution ready to totally get rid of RPA, and you and I looked across the table and you said, hey, let's give this thing a year. And in January, me and Nathan met, it was the Crane Festival Day in Birchwood, and said, hey, let's, let's, instead of it being just in, in District Oodawal, let's, let's do this thing for the whole county. Remember that conversation? And, and that's what kind of blossomed. And the whole goal is how do you get the county involved, how do you get the residents involved, and, and what they want their neighborhood to look like? I'm not going to call the name of the, the program was, but I, I thought it was great that if you could deep dive down, and it took us several, several visits and meetings to get Nathan, to get people involved, they, they kind of wanted to push back on us, if you remember, saying it's your job to do it, and it's, I'm pushing back to, no, we need your input. And finally, I think after almost two years, there was, you know, we, we met at a barbecue place before meeting, so, hey, let's, let's slow this thing down and let's get community input, and we made the decision to kind of, let's get a group of people together and say, hey, here it is. Tell us what you want. And this group of people stood up. This group of people sacrificed family time, they sacrificed work, they took off work. This group of individuals met not once a week, but they were meeting twice a week, once a week as a group, and then once a week, Nathan, with, with you and the RPA. And then, you know, I, I tried my best to get there, but I didn't want it, I wanted it to be theirs, so I sat in the background because I wanted to be their plant. And I want to commend that group because I, I think you all did an awesome job in pulling it together. So we're going to get some folks out of your way here. And this group that was involved in the North Area Nine Plan, will you stand up? There's a couple that didn't stand, and then there's some that's not here, and we appreciate every single one. I appreciate, I think me and Commissioner Highlander said today, we wanted this thing to happen today, and then somehow or another went into the left field, but my goal was for it to be solved today. So we'll, we'll work on how to get it back on the table or get it back in front of everybody. We'll figure that piece out and get it pretty soon, because I think we, we definitely have got to get some things in place, and you've heard me say this- me say this a lot, safety net, right? We've got to get that safety net in place. But I do appreciate what you all did and the commitment you all made. With that, we'll move into any new discussion, other than zoning. You need your name and address, and you'll get three minutes. And it begins when you state your name and address. So we'll begin here with the young lady here.
Sabrina Daniel, 4410 Maryland Drive, Chattanooga, Tennessee, 37412. Gentlemen, I am looking for heroes today. People who can step up, see things the way they are, and make good decisions. You have in front of you a handout for me. And just to stay on topic, if anybody ends up having questions, just so it doesn't count against my three minutes, it's fine. I'm just going to run through it, and comments or questions are fine. Attention, Hamilton County Commissioners, please share with the Hamilton County Planning Agency. Sabrina Daniel, retired teacher administrator, cell 423-693-5600. You've already heard my address. I'm a concerned citizen with extended family in the Udoa area. So the subject of this is extremely necessary considerations for developmental approval observations. Evidently, when developers have approached Chattanooga, the following questions don't appear to have been considered. My examples would be East Brainerd, Udoa, and this morning, I heard Mr. Hilton on the phone call with the news. So evidently, college jail's working through some things, too. Eight questions, sort of, I do not compare these to the Constitution, but constitutional, bottom-line stuff. What kind of city do the citizens want this to be? A fabulous quality of life versus mindless development for more tax dollars? Is this a safe area to develop? Commissioner reminded me of the importance of this. Do we have the water sewer systems to handle the development? Do we have the roads to accommodate this so the traffic does not look like Christmas traffic three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year? Do we have the schools to accommodate the students from this development? Does this enhance the beauty, quality of life in our city, or detract from it? How much tax money does this actually bring in? County Commissioner Friends, would you be willing to live next door to this development? Thank you for reading and getting accurate data before making critical decisions which affect all of us, considering quality of life, becoming the city we want, and developing as we should. It does not have to be one or the other. Sincerely, Sabrina Grace Daniel, a concerned citizen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ain't going to take no three minutes. My wife out here gone, my hoe ain't in the doghouse right now. I came to save my, now walking my hoe, Ruby Taylor retired, and I'm going to be missing her up here. I hope somebody be able to take his spot to answer all the questions, I guessing. And I'm going to be missing you up here, Ruby Taylor. And I got to go, because my wife gone out here before, before I might get her home or something. I got to go back to work. And I'll talk to you later. I hope I be able to see you outside the, out of the courthouse. Thank you very much. I miss you. Retired, probably retired birthday party. I was working, nobody did not call me, maybe I thought I'd know. I got work for a little. I can't retire. I got to keep the, why, what do they say, happy five. Alone trying to do, keep it to keep it to leave.
Morning. My name is Robert Edwards. I live at 12 North Lindcrest in the city of Ridgside. Lived there for twenty-five years, and actually came down here in part to maybe consult with the county attorney to ask about filing a open record request. The reason is that I learned belatedly last week that there was going to be a Ridgside Commissioners' meeting regarding some six acres behind the Ridgside Swimming Pool bordering on the south side, south and east side of Shalaford Road. And as I say, I've been a resident for many years, and there was not a, I don't receive their emails. Somehow, I don't know why that is, but long ago, I registered. There was also a meeting, January 12th, to abandon the original roads that were imagined for this property. And I'll tell you, this is about six acres of land that was part of a community supported by the Missionary Ridge Baptist Church and the farm next to it, which my wife and I happen to own. And all I'm really asking, and unfortunately, I think they passed a plat for this proposal, but I learned just through our Facebook group, that there is, that there have been community meetings to discuss this six acres, what would happen to it. And suddenly, somehow, I was left out of that conversation. And I just wish that Ridgside would allow me to present a second proposal, instead of building seven new homes there. I've got another suggestion. And hey, Ridgside's their own city. If they want to turn that down, that's their business. But I just think that maybe due process was not properly served. And it is a very historic piece of land, and I would be happy to talk to you about that. It lies at the foot of Missionary Ridge, and we have three and a half acres. And I mean, that's apart from this subject, what I would propose. I just think that I was denied the opportunity to present this to my county, my city council. And I'm seeking redress.
I believe in county attorney, it's Ridgside?
Yes, sir.
Has their own commission. They have their own attorney, and they're part of the RPA, but they have their own planning commission and all. So...
But are there not state laws that they have to notify residents of? I mean, I did get a letter about an abandonment about this property, but it said nothing about plats. And when that meeting came to be held, it was canceled. And so there was a sign that went up, but there was never a second sign. And I just...
I would recommend county attorney, if maybe we can give him the information on who the attorney is for Ridgside and...
Well, I can trust you, the attorney and the city council people there, you know, didn't want to hear my opinion. So I don't know that the attorney would either. But perhaps an open record request could answer some questions as to why.
Well, we wouldn't even have those records. You'd have to go through them to get the open record requests.
Could I file that with the county?
No, we don't. Mr. Chairman, you have to file it with Ridgside, the municipality itself. Mr. Schultz was gesturing that he, I think he knows something about what happened, too. But that's not a county commission matter.
Brian Schultz, RPA, I know what he's talking about. There is a plat that was approved, planning commission last week. It's not his property.
Can you do me a favor? Can you?
Yeah, I can talk to him.
Can you take Mr. Edwards, and maybe you guys go aside and kind of...
Yeah, I think we've talked before, too.
So Mr. Edwards, Brian's with the RPA, and he's going to talk with you about a solution there. Okay. All right.
Thank you. Monty Bell, the homeless journalist, the coherent Foxman with a trillion-dollar voice, 727 East 11th Street. But we all know that there's not a place where people live. We all know this. I want to thank the group back here for allowing me to step before them so I can get this out of the way. Two-hundred-and-eleven billion, thirty-four million is the price tag that you all must or shall pay. You may pay it before the end of next week. It'll save you all a whole lot of trouble. Mr. Chair, not naming your name or your position, it's your second term, and you have policed me, you have censored me, you have denied me due process of law and equal protection of the laws, even the due process clause in the equal protection clause. But the federal government says that I'm entitled to two-hundred-and-eleven billion, thirty-four million, for you're using the county commission as your own personal courtroom to prosecute Monty Bell without a license. I was ran out of the county attorney's office a couple of weeks ago, seeking your date of birth, seeking your place of residence, seeking your JD for where you practice law. I even had your deputies with me, and he refused that. Okay? Now, all of this, I'm going to just set it over here, not to disturb, but this is not my life. This is what they call a database of records. Your county attorney is on every page of my life, with a judge named J.B. Bennett that's recused and disqualified, has been for seventeen years. You called police on me, the city has done it, the state has done it. It says, State of Tennessee versus Monty Bell, and two counts of judge shopping, which I defeated. Every attorney that's ever been appointed to my life by this guy here, this is worse than any form of black-on-black crime enforced by whites. Last but not least, I was the assistant to a man called Alex Haley. He wrote a many series called... I was his assistant for about five years. It sickens me that you've got a county commissioner up here that uses a radio program to mimic the capabilities of Monty Bell, and then sit here and mock me. Cannot read, cannot write, cannot spell, cannot speak, Monty Bell. But he uses his position to call the police on me. I sued the city in nineteen-eighty-three for failing to educate my black people, and wanted to sue the county.
Mr. Bell, thank you for your time. Next, again, you name and address.
Board of Commissioners, Boduval, 15825 Colquittville Road. I'm just here to stress the fact that majority of residents in this county are, we feel that we need to go step by step, real slow, throughout this process, regarding Plan Hamilton and rezoning stuff, and everything that goes with that. I'm here to say the same, same things I've said prior times I've been here. It matters, what we do. Like, it's, is it really worth it to use the property that your predecessors, as y'all said, have bought? Because that was their predecessors, that was their problem. And now y'all are here, should it also be your same problem? And do you see it as the same use that they saw it for? Is it worth putting tens of millions of dollars into something that may not get that same return of investment back to y'all? Or we're just going to be wasting the taxpayers' dollars with this? And I'm asking all of you this question, because y'all are aboard. Y'all are basically, for lack of a better word, in control of what happens. And I'm saying that if we ain't thinking about, if we're not thinking about it with the right mindset, we can do something completely detrimental. We can do, y'all can do something irreparable to our county. Because, in all honesty, the infrastructure, the roads, the people just don't want all of this development. Because I've came up here last time and talked to y'all about the roads, and my experience driving on Saudi Lake, which has a huge amount of people driving it every day, over the water. And I know it was repaired sometime some years ago, but, I mean, we have to think about it. It's important. Like, if we don't have the infrastructure to put something in, and we put it in, it's not going to improve. And I'm just here to vouch for everybody and vouch for agriculture. I wear this jacket with pride, because FFA, the Future Farmers of Agriculture, we have a vision. The FFA Creed states, "I believe in a future of agriculture with a faith born not of words but of deeds, achievements won by the present and past generations of agricultures, and the promise of better days through better ways, even as the better things we now enjoy have come to us from the struggles of former years." That is the first paragraph of the FFA Creed written by Ian Tivoli. I know those words by heart, because those are the words I live every day. I'm here to stress to all of you to think about it, go through it step by step slowly, process every bit of information, and make the right decision for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Beau.
I'm John Peter. I'm at 185 Wyndham Valley Road. I go to Silver Baptist Academy. I'm going to kind of piggyback off what Beau said about sustainable growth. It's, we're putting in so many houses in Udoa, Snow Hill Road, Udoa Georgetown. There's not roads to accommodate all the people. Hidden Hills Farms off Edmond Road, it's paved over. That's all dirt now. We got to, we got to think about the future of this county. I'm thinking about it, what my kids will see. When I was a kid, we'd drive by anywhere. It is all, it was all farms, cattle, everything agriculture. Now, it's just dirt and a concrete jungle of cookie-cutter houses, houses, and these developers, who are quite frankly evil for what they're doing, destroying our culture, our agriculture, everything that this county stands for. It's changing, and this county's falling apart because of it. We need to either, we need to focus on sustainable growth, sewer, water, energy, roads, everything that matters when building more houses. We need to put more thought into it, because right now, we're not at all. And it's going to cause big problems if we don't handle it soon. In from, I think it's past fifteen years, I've got a bunch of facts, I wrote a paper on it. We've lost over four million acres countrywide to developers building these houses. And we've lost two million, or are projected to lose two million by 2027 in Tennessee. That is ninety-six counties. That's equivalent to ninety-six counties in Tennessee that we're going to lose to developers. Not to mention endangered species, plants, native plants, and just everything in between. I'm in Boy Scouts of America, so we go camping a lot. I just came back from a week-long camping trip. No internet, cell reception, anything. I love it. I love being outside. I hunt and fish, hike, camp, all of it. I want my kids to have that, too. And right now, with this development and the speed of this, and not sustainable growth, we're not going to have that. Chattanooga and Hamilton County is going to be a concrete jungle before we know it, with no green space. We're a national park, we're a national park city, correct? Or whatever it's called, first one in America. So how about we represent that and focus on our green spaces and sustainable growth, instead of just throwing up houses for that out of thought and care in the world, and focus on quality and sustainability over quantity? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patrick Figgelstaller. I attend Silverdale Baptist Academy, and I live at 185 Wyndham Valley Road. I want to speak today about why developing new homes in our county's rural areas is a serious mistake, not just for us, but for the future generations, including children like me and my fellow classmates. When we build on farmland, we permanently lose the land that grows our food. This threatens local agriculture, reduces food security, and disconnects our kids from the vital knowledge of where their food comes from. It also harms livelihoods of farmers who have sustained our communities for generations. Beyond food, development strains precious natural resources, especially water. New homes demand more water and energy, stretching supplies than an increasing population. This contributes to climate change, which will bring harsher storms, health risks, and economic challenges that our, that our generation will have to face. Rural areas are also home to diverse wildlife and natural spaces that offer our kids a chance to explore, learn, and connect with nature. When we pave over these habitats, we rob them of these experiences and degrade their environment that supports all life. Development also increases flooding risks, flooding risks and pollution, threatening the health and safety of our community. Longer community, I mean, longer commutes in sprawling neighborhoods weaken our social fabric and reduce the quality of life for everyone. In short, building new homes in rural areas sacrifices farmland, natural resources, wildlife, and community character. It burdens future generations with environmental risks, fewer opportunities, and a diminished connection to the land. We owe it to our generations, to our future generations, to protect these rural spaces, to preserve a healthy, sustainable, and vibrant future. Let's make the, let's make the choices that honor the land and the legacy we leave behind. Thank you. Thank you.
Kim Halt, 8618 Snow Hill Road. To say that we are disappointed in today's vote is an understatement. If this is not brought back, over $500,000 more for several studies was spent on the development of this plan and it will be wasted. Citizens spent countless hours working on a plan that aligns with the vision of our community. Citizens took time off work to attend this meeting and last week's meeting, and their time and money was wasted. The next meeting to the plan should be held in the evening so that everyone can attend. This is a win for the Home Builders and Realtors Association because it means business as usual. The vote today silenced the voices and the will of the citizens of the rural areas of the county. Overdevelopment of already congested roads is not responsible growth, and the county is blessed with pristine farmland that should be preserved. The 2024 Costs of Services report was very enlightening because we found out that only 008 of the property tax rate is allocated specifically for roads. Residents have heard for over twenty years that property tax revenue from new development will pay for the infrastructure, more specifically the roads. Now we know the property tax does not pay for the roads. And new subdivisions create new roads that all taxpayers are ultimately responsible for. Last week, one of our team members was asked where infrastructure came before development and anywhere in Tennessee. We didn't have to go outside of our area to find a couple of examples. After Little Debbie Park was constructed, numerous multifamily residential and commercial centers were developed. When Apiston Park was widened from a two-lane winding rural road to five lanes between I-75 and Little Debbie Parkway, more multifamily residential commercial centers were developed. So there are two very good examples of when infrastructure came before development right here in our county. We are not anti-growth. We are against more density on inadequate infrastructure. Growth can still occur on two-lane rural roads if A1 zone properties developed at a current density of two per acre. We are asking that this be brought back and that the will of the citizens of the rural areas be considered and that you will vote for our compromise plan that we spent countless hours on and worked with numerous people in the homebuilding industry to come up with. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Faulkner. I live at 5721 Islandview Drive, Harrison, Tennessee. I was part of the team that was put together to come up with a compromise plan. It was a plan to start with and it had everything in it we wanted. Then we were told there is no way any of you all would vote for that. Maybe one, maybe two, but not the majority, and we couldn't get it passed. So we worked on a compromise. And we thought at the time, we were working with home builders. We thought that we had come up with a plan that they would accept and we could all work in harmony. Then we found out different. Today we came hoping to be able to persuade six people to vote on Plan Hamilton because it's not just us, it's people from all over the county. If you read any comments, talk to anybody outside of Harrison, up in Saudi Daisy, up in Sel Creek, Signal Mountain, Hickson, everywhere. People are frustrated with this growth, unbridled growth. Growth is good, we all admit to that. But unbridled is detrimental to our society, our communities, and the fabric of which we were built. Somebody mentioned Park City, we're gonna be concrete city guys. All the other counties in this state that are growing as fast as us have taken measures to try to mitigate the damage that's causing to their residents and their citizens. I'm hearing people say, "I've lived here all my life, but I'm ready to move. I'm sick of it. Our voices are never heard. No one listens. No one stands behind us." So I implore you all to dust off the plan and all the statistics we gave last week and the week before in our presentations and look at it. Talk to us. We are an open book. Let us work together to come up with a plan to protect our communities. Thank you.
Greg Lewis, 5555 Hunter Road. I just wanted to come up here for a minute today and encourage you guys. If I understand the process right, now that this has been tabled, it takes eight votes to bring it back for discussion. And I assume that means if you don't get the eight votes, then Plan Hamilton just dies, and I encourage you not to let that happen. Our county spent, I think it was 500 and something thousand dollars for this study. And then the RPA had to take what the contractor didn't finish, and they had, they had to work on it as well. So I mean, our county government's probably got six or seven hundred thousand dollars in this thing already. And that doesn't include all of the time and effort from the citizens and you guys. I mean, there's no telling how much time you spent, you know, talking on the phone and reading emails from constituents. And I bet you all in that same boat because this is, this is an important topic to our whole community. So I just want to encourage you, you know, don't let Plan Hamilton die. Let's continue that conversation and figure out a way forward. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Wayne Baylau, 2120 Rifford Wood Road, Lakeside. I am also a Commissioner of Lakeside and Vice Chair of W W T A. Speaking about the compromise plan today, I'm reiterating the disappointment. Not in the process, not in the people, but of the maneuvering that went on today at this thing tabled. The net result appears to trash three years of hard work by the planning group, by everybody here and the people here, and reset things back to the wild, wild west. Without a plan, without a vision, without anything. So every planner that I know says it's better to have a plan than no plan. You can always amend a plan. I agree with a piece of what Commissioner Sharp said, it's his last statement, which is, "You're all here and we're all here in my roles to do the will of the people." I think that's what this whole process was, was about the will of the people and to do it in the daylight. So while you're all here today, if you can get this thing back up off the table and delay it for two months, so more discussion or whatever, get the thing back up off the table and try to make this, don't waste all this time and money and effort. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jim Stewart, 13015 Emerald Bay Drive. I'm in the unincorporated part of the county with the Saudi Daisy Post Office. I want to make two points. First, on Plan Hamilton, I think it's been a phenomenal effort. One of the most important parts of Plan Hamilton is the resident feedback that has been collected. I urge you to please read how the residents feel about growth in the county. There is an overall desire to protect open spaces. And I think you saw that with the support in the audience today. You've seen it in the U T C study, which was just published today. County residents, please listen to us. We really value open spaces as growth continues. We're not anti-growth, but please protect some open spaces for us. I'm also the Executive Director of the Chattanooga Audubon Society. We manage 500 acres across Hamilton County. We're in three different districts here. To give an example of how much support that's provided by the community, we receive no government funding at all. And we're able to manage 500 acres of nature sanctuaries in the county. We've increased our budget by 50% this year due to increased donations and programs that we run. So it's an example of how you can have a viable business based on nature sanctuaries and protecting them. I do have one, what we believe is an exciting update on the land swap that I think some of you know that the Audubon Society is doing with state parks. We're in attorney review right now, which is, been a fantastic milestone ahead after almost a year and a half of working with the state. And what that will do is provide the missing link of the Cumberland Trail and Hamilton County. That area where Audubon Mountain, the Cumberland Trail, and McDonald Farm come together is unique. It's gonna draw tourists, it's gonna generate money for the county, and we're excited to be close to the finish line on that. I'd also love to have some of you visit that part of the county. Would be happy to give you a tour to see what's to come. But that's gonna be an exciting update for tourism in Hamilton County. And it's gonna drive a lot of revenue, we think. So thank you for your time.
Sel Creek. On behalf of the McDonald Farm Advisory Committee that was appointed by the county mayor with Commissioner Chairman Eversol and Commissioner Shipley, we'd like to read a statement. Even though Plan Hamilton was tabled today, it still serves as a benchmark highlighting that over 70% of residents in every area opted to prioritize farmland protection and greenway conservation. McDonald Farm is to set this commission's precedent as to how the county will act on community-based objectives. With recent national city park designation, the county has the potential to lead the way, providing examples of what smart and green development strategies look like, including highlighting the importance of both agritourism, both from a community standpoint and a financial one. If the county wants something it's never had before, it's going to have to do things they've never done before. That's our official statement. My personal one is to address Chamber of Commerce Charles Wood. His input was included in the Croy engineering, which was fast-tracked and done biasedly. You've heard from Randall Gross when he came with his presentation for an economic impact study, and that was done unbiasedly. I hope that you'll think on that and go with something that's unbiased rather than biased. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Don Johnson, 7708 Diamond Head Drive, Utawah, Tennessee. And I, I also am on the committee, and we're almost done, guys, so I'm gonna be brief. I just want to thank the mayor, Commissioner Eversol, and Mr. Highlander for giving us the opportunity to, as a team, to go ahead and work towards getting a good plan. Unfortunately, you know, we're a little disappointed today. But the reality is, I don't think it's dead. And I want to take, I want to take the opportunity to say, this is a positive. Let's, let's sit back and take a look. And I know everybody here has a different opinion of what we need. But let's try to work together. Our team compromised. We listened to the citizens, we listened to the developers. Did we have a good plan? We think so. Did it make everybody happy? No. I don't think we're ever gonna make a plan that's gonna satisfy everybody's needs. But please, I implore you to go ahead and sit down, take the time to look at it, and let's try to get a compromise. We did, and by all means, please engage us. We'd like to be involved all the way through this thing. We're kind of invested, we've had a few months at it. But the citizens are kind of looking to us and trust us. So please, keep us involved and don't let this, don't let this die. Thank you.
Brian Glasscock, live 1531 Laurel Breeze Drive on Signal Mountain. And every time I come to one of these meetings, I figure out how much you guys have to deal with. I want to thank you for your time and effort. You've taken on about two full-time jobs here. Last night Commissioner Baker put together a really great town hall meeting up on the mountain that was very well attended. There's no plans for a sewer extension on Signal Mountain. There's no plans for major road improvements on Signal Mountain. Most importantly, there's no plans for a new school or schools, which leaves no place to educate the new growth student population. When you look at our, our density, countryside residential or A1 zoning, you have two dwelling units per acre, those are gross acreage. A 100-acre tract times two is 200 homes. If you have 50 buildable acres, you can still put that 200 homes on the 50 acres, which is four units per acre. Everybody sees the two per acre and thinks, that's what you get. That's not correct. If you go to three dwelling units per acre, that's 300 homes. On that same 50 buildable acres, you could put 290 homes at 5.8 units per acre, which is the minimum, minimum lot size. Last week I stated that the same 100-acre site in Williamson County would yield 16 homes. They would have required a 48-acre permanent open space on that 100 acres. Every county we looked at except Hamilton has a one-to-five-acre minimum lot size in A1. We need to reduce our A1 density rather than increase it. When the search for a new moxim bin facility began, I never realized there were so many large tracts available in our urban areas. The Eastdale site was one of them. It's 160 acres. That site is zoned RN1-1, which I believe could yield as many as 900 to 1,000 new homes, if I've read the zoning correct. I think those other counties that we checked on are outgrowing us by using urban growth. They're not doing it on one-to-five-acre tracts or 16 houses on a 100-acre tract. Has anyone thought to try and identify an inventory, these sites, and give that to our local builders and developers? Give our local developers the first shot at these properties? Give our local guys the tax breaks for urban development? That may be a method to increase builder volume in areas where infrastructure is already in place without increasing A1 density. Thank you very much.
How's it going? Andrew Jones, 607 Timber Ridge. I mean, I have a handful of things I'd like to say. Maybe come up here and speak in riddles, who knows? But at the end of the day, why do I care? I'm an American. Why do I care about Tennessee and Hickson? I'm from Texas, Davy Crockett, he died in the Alamo. So I never took civics class, but I took Texas history three times. So on your C H C R P A dot org website, you have planning projects, and there's this page where it says, list of plans and studies. There's not one study on here. I, I think as someone that comes up here and cares about a person like Davy Crockett and dying for freedom and making Texas its own. Look on, so we can look at history and we can study it. We can do case studies. You can look at different cities like Chattanooga. You can look like, look at different counties like Hamilton County and see what others have done in the past and also predict what could happen in the future. We talk about building all this manufacturing, and I know Trump wants to bring manufacturing back here, but we also have to look at automation and remote jobs, and where is the 21st century gonna take us? And I can tell you right now that there are plenty of open spaces, plenty of houses that can be entrepreneurial, and you can bring economic growth through entrepreneurs. That is the American spirit. That is freedom at its heart and its core is, how can I own myself and not focus on y'all and hoping that y'all are gonna come save me? There's a lot of different ways to look at this, but if you don't even have studies on the list of plans and studies on the website, it boggles the mind. I, I've been looking at this for a week and a half. I know that the HOA has a huge incentive on a lot of the planning and investment here. When it comes to putting in infrastructure, I mean, you gotta put in infrastructure. It says on the RPA website, or maybe it's the Plan Hamilton website, which why there's two different websites for that also boggles the mind. And maybe you should fix that. But I, there's just a lot of common sense questions that people have that aren't being answered. And I would, I know y'all have a lot going on. As the, one of the gentlemen said before me, every time I show up, I realize how much y'all are going on. And maybe you should get paid more and quit whatever part-time gig y'all are doing and make this a full-time gig because Hamilton County is the epicenter of the fast- Because Hamilton County is the epicenter of the fastest internet in the world and there's a lot of potential here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Shipley, you have to comment.
I do, Chairman. After watching the faces of the people today when it was tabled, that was upsetting to them. Hearing them talk here now, that seems to be it's on the table and maybe we can't get it off the table. So I don't think we would have came to a conclusion had we not said it on the table today. I don't think either side. But in good faith, these people come down here today, in good faith, since it's in, in the same meeting, same day. Can we remove it from the table now with no vote on the consequences? But remove it and put it back to where we can start working on it?
Attorney Taylor, we can, we can individually work on it, but we in a, as a group, from my understanding, when it's on the table, we can't discuss it and it's not in a meeting until we pull it off the table.
Attorney Taylor.
It's got, it's got to come off of the table for you all to do it as a group. And it comes off the table in a session and you're still in a session, truthfully.
So, so if someone, so truthfully right now, if someone made a motion to take it off the table, a motion would be in order at second and, and eight votes.
Mr. Check, can I ask a point of order question?
Yeah.
Mr. Attorney, can you confirm that it's eight votes? I believe Roberts Rule says six to remove from table. So it's the, it's, I just want to be clear. It is the, it's the county commission rules that say super not.
Let me double check. I believe it's your rule, say two-thirds vote to take it off the table. You all go ahead and I, I'll, I'll tell you just a minute.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Mr. Attorney, I mean, I know you're looking up something, but even though, even though it's, it's on the table, we can still discuss it. We just can't vote on it.
What?
We can still discuss Plan Hamilton. We can't vote on it until we get, pull it off the table, correct?
My understanding of Commissioner Graham's motion was the, the, the subject was put on the table. It was a part of the resolution. The subject, the resolution addressed Plan Hamilton. And that's what Commissioner Graham, my understanding Commissioner Graham's motion was intended to do, put everything on the table. And he can clarify that. That was my understanding of, of his motion.
Go ahead. I didn't, my motion to table it was because I don't think the group would have liked. If I was forced to vote on one or the other, I don't think they would have liked what I voted on, and I didn't like either one of them. I, I still think there was more time and I don't think it's dead. I don't think we're not discussing it. And we can all discuss it and we can all make improvements to it. I think there's good in both. And I think we can take the both and make one and that we can all, not everybody's going to be happy, but we, we can make each side a compromise to where everybody can be happy enough to vote. But.
But what I'm understanding, Commissioner, is that, is that we can't talk about it until we pull it off the table, which I disagree with.
Well, I disagree with. I think we can talk about it. We just can't deliberate. We can't tell how we're going to vote. It can be brought up in committees. It can be brought up in public meetings. We can talk about it in public. We just can't deliberate.
Maybe we pull it off the table right now. We don't have to worry about it.
Well, if you pull it off the table, you're still deliberating and you still can't deliberate on it for breaking the sunshine law. So that doesn't change it.
What we're doing is telling these people right here, we pull it off the table, that we're going to go back to work and it's not going to lay someone on the shit.
I think you just told them, man, I'm telling the same thing. I'm ready to, to pass something as well, but I don't think we're ready to pass either one of those decisions today.
No, we're not.
So you, you responded to Baker.
Yeah.
Is where we were at. And we kind of went to a conversation here. So, Mr. Baker, did you get your answer from?
Not really, but.
See, answer your question, answer Commissioner Smith's question. The rule said when any resolution or motion is laid on the table by a vote of commission, it shall require a two-thirds vote. That goes back to the eight votes. So it takes two-thirds votes to take it off the table. But, but your, your discussion was on Plan Hamilton, which was a part of the resolution. And, and, and if that was placed on the table, you, you are discussing, which is the same as deliberating. And so therefore you need to take it off of the table to be, in order to then further discuss.
Okay, well, I'm, 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 I'm willing to take it off, make a motion to take it off the table.
Second.
No, go ahead.
Baker just made a motion.
I've got a question.
Hang on a second.
Go ahead with the second. Who made the second?
So I heard Baker made the motion to take it off the table. And Commissioner Highlander made the second, because the meeting's not been adjourned.
Correct. Uh, quick.
What's your point of order? Well, I think we're all pretty clear, Brown. It's the first one. Well, but we'll have to talk about both separately. We can't talk about both combined. So if we, if we take the first one off, then we got to discuss to take the second one off.
Yeah.
Only fire one and do it.
So we're looking at 625-59. So we've got a motion from Commissioner Baker to take it off the table and Commissioner Highlander seconded that motion. So now we got lights. So, uh, Mr. Graham, did we answer your questions? Your lights on?
A quick question. The rule 18 in the book says two-thirds of the members present to take it from the table. We've got some people missing, so I just want to be clear on how many votes we need.
Takes two-thirds present.
Of those present is what rule 18 says.
That is correct.
I don't know.
Maggie's still here, so.
We have more lights that, so, Mr. Sharp?
Thank you, Chairman. I had one thing I was going to say, but now it appears that, I don't know, maybe I need to say something else. I, I was just going to, to say to the people here that have been working on this plan for quite some time, that I would be happy to meet with you and discuss ways that would, you know, help me get to where I'm comfortable. With the caveat that, you know, we speak words of positive intent and we assume and posit, assume a positive intent. I know that it's an emotional time for a lot of people and I appreciate that. It's, it's, it's tough to talk about these hard topics at times, but, but, you know, I think it's important that we talk about them. I certainly see in my mind a pathway forward for me. But, but I'm not, I don't see anything right now that has been said or done that would make me want to reconsider what we have done today. If we had more substantive alterations or, I don't know, lack, for lack of a better term, to, to what's in front of us, then, then, you know, I could see how, you know, that could be productive. But, but personally for me, I'm just going to say I would not, I'm, I'm not ready to, to, to pull it off the table personally.
We would have loved to have you to some of our 30 some vote, uh, meetings we had, so.
Yeah, I mean, and that's fair. And I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if that's, you know, said with positive intention or not, but I will assume that it is.
Have a smile on my face.
Right? Because that's me doing my part. I did go to some of the meetings.
You did.
I did go to some of the meetings and I made some comments that I think, you know, folks recognize as being challenges. You know, a lot of those things have not been addressed. So I made my concerns known and I don't know that they were truly addressed. I think that the, the plan lacks a lot of things. You know, job growth opportunities being one of them. You know, I've, I've had some good conversation with Representative Vital this morning. I think there's opportunity to move forward. But there's some compromise that needs to occur. And, you know, that, that's something I feel pretty strongly about. So, and, 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 and other things, you know, and frankly, I'm confused. I mean, we, we talk about preserving farmland on one hand, and then on the other hand, we talk about reducing density. Well, the way you preserve green space is by increasing density. So I, I've got to understand that. If you're going to build 100 houses, right? And if each house can only be built on a two-acre lot, that's 200 acres of land of green space that you're taking up. Right? If you're going to build 100 houses and you can build four of them on one acre lot, quarter acre lots, it takes a lot less land. It's math. So, you know, there, there's different things that I think should be considered. And, and provided that, that we enter into conversation with, you know, the principles of assuming positive intent and speaking words of positive intent, I'm open to those conversations. I think that they're important to have, but right now I don't see any reason to reconsider. Thank you.
Question.
Hang on.
How many people does it take, Brooke? Is it the, the super majority what's here or? Present.
So based on what you have right now would be six, correct, Ruben?
Okay.
So you have eight, two-thirds of the six.
Let's go back to order here. So Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, Chairman. Very briefly, we, if we meet again, rather than trying to get these people to take off work, I hope we could have an evening meeting, but I'd like to call for the question.
Any objections for? Got no objections? We got seven present. Got five.
And Buck's still here.
Five. Need five votes to take it off the table. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck absent. Commissioner Chauncey absent. Commissioner Graham?
No.
Commissioner Hilton? Dr. Highlander?
Yes.
Dr. Mackey absent. Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Shipley?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chairman Eversole?
Absolutely, yes.
One, two, three, four, five. You need six.
We needed six.
Yeah, I got his vote. So I had three noes and five, five yeses. No, that was a table roll call.
I, I asked, there's any objections? No one objected.
Take it off the table. It failed.
Okay. Commissioner Hilton?
Yes, sir. My intent, and I think several of the others, I was going to be no either way today. I put it on the table so that the people from Area Nine and other areas of the county could go back, meet with the home builders and hopefully grind something out that is a little more palatable. I'm certain that we can get eight votes to bring it off the table. I'm happy to work to bring this about. To do a, a vote when the people who voted on it have just walked out and tried to procedurally slide it by gentlemen, that's, that's out of line. And I appreciate what you're doing for your constituents. But, I mean, that, that's, I don't know. I don't, I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hilton. I appreciate your comments, but I would say this, you were the ones that kind of voted with or not voted with, but participated with this group. You know where they stood. And I think, I think for me, it was a slap in their face and the hard work they did. But with that said, recess till June 25th, 9:30. It is.